That's the be quiet symbol, thank you. All right, call to order, the July 30th, 2019, meeting of the North Andover Planning Board. We're gonna jump around a little bit in our agenda. We'll start with 62 Salem Way, Maria and Anthony DiMarco. Application for a watershed special permit under Part 5, Watershed Protection District, and Section 195-10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw. The project involves the construction of an in-ground swimming pool and pavement patio with non-discharge buffer, within the non-discharge buffer zone. Project is located within the R1 zoning district. Hi.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. My name's Greg Hockman from Williams &amp; Sparagges. Here representing the applicants, Anthony and Maria DiMarco, for the watershed special permit application for their property at 62 Salem Way. 62 Salem Way, does everybody know where that is? So it's pretty close to the golf course. It's a cul-de-sac that goes down the hill. There's probably about a dozen or so homes. It was constructed in the 90s, part of the Great Pond Estates. This is the second to last house on the left, just before you get to the cul-de-sac. We're here before you this evening with the hopes of securing a watershed special permit for the construction of an in-ground swimming pool and pavement patio in the non-discharge buffer zone, related to a isolated vegetated wetland that's located in the front of their property. The pool and patio are outside of the 400-foot non-discharge buffer zone from the lake itself, but this is from the wetland that is within the watershed to Lake Chickewig. There's not too many options on this property for citing the proposed pool and patio. The front yard, as you can see, there's, this is the wetland here. This is the limit of the non-disturbed zone, and the 400-foot from the non-discharge is somewhere out in here. So the closest point in the pool to the wetland out front is about 196 feet, plus or minus. Pushing it further back on the lot would require the removal of a lot more trees. We tried to shoehorn it in an area that straddles the wooded buffer zone behind their house and the rooftop infiltration chamber system that's currently installed to handle the roof runoff, which really forced the pool in this location. The clients are happy with it in that spot, so it wasn't too hard to convince them that that's where it had to go. As mitigation for the slight increase in impervious surface, we are proposing an infiltration trench around the perimeter of the pool that should help infiltrate stormwater during, you know, most storm events. The pool itself, as you can see, it's not very large. It's a modest-sized pool. It's a kidney-shaped pool, it has a small spire in front. The patio we're proposing would be a bluestone patio to match the existing patio that's currently on the rear of the, rear of the house. We were before the zoning board last month, and we secured a variance for the construction of the pool. Any new structure within the non-discharge zone requires a variance from the zoning board as well as a watershed special permit for new folks. The zoning board had some questions about if we ever had to de-water this pool, what our plans would be. And we simply said if the swimming pool ever had to be de-watered completely, that we'd pump it onto a truck and remove it from site. But anybody that has a pool knows, after a major storm event, sometimes you have to let some water out, and certainly before you winterize the pool, you have to let some water out. So we told them that we'd let the pool sit for at least a week to allow the chemicals to dissipate prior to winterizing the pool. And then it would be safely pumped into either the rooftop infiltration system that's currently right next to it, or a separate drywell. So the clients are fully prepared to put a drywell in if this board doesn't want them to introduce additional water into the rooftop infiltration system. But it does appear to be oversized. It seems to be working fine. The soil's in the area moderately well-drained. We didn't see any signs of failure when we were in the rear of this yard, so we think that would be a good approach for de-watering. We did submit an O&amp;M for the infiltration trench, but we didn't submit any type of O&amp;M for the pool itself. But we did note that it would be a non-backwash filtration system. It would be one of the cartridge filters. All pool chemicals would be stored in the garage until the clients either propose a shed or another suitable storage area for the pool chemicals. I guess in summary, it's, I mentioned at the beginning of this, there's not a lot of options for citing the pool. We did try to balance tree removal and respect the zones and really try to get this thing as far away as we could, and we think we've done that. I just wanna see if I, if I missed anything. We're outside the buffer zone, so we don't require a permit from Conservation. But Conservation did have some comments, which we're fully prepared to adhere to. One of them was, there's a catch basin that's currently in the driveway in this area here. And Amy had mentioned that we should put a silt sack in that during construction, just in case any sediment tries to migrate down the driveway. We can do that, and I believe she wanted some erosion controls and stockpile areas shown on the plan as well, which we could also do. The plan was also submitted to the town engineer for his review and comment. And he submitted a letter saying that it appears the applicant has made reasonable effort to cite the proposed pools far away from the resource areas, including an isolated vegetated wetland and the watershed protection district non-discharge boundary as possible. In addition, the proposed design does include a proposed infiltration trench to be constructed around the pool and patio, area to allow any stormwater to drain and infiltrate back into the ground. The proposed design appears to meet the watershed special permit requirements, and the DPW has no further comment.
Are we, are we being asked to permit the pool and the patio? So it seemed, the email we have from Amy Maxner, Conservation Agent, says that the, the front pavement walkway is within the 100-foot buffer zone and would require a permit from Conservation.
So I thought you were referring to the pool patio.
Yeah, okay.
That's an existing condition, so I'm not sure if Amy was aware of that.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to figure out.
Nothing on the front is actually being constructed.
I said, nothing that we're permitting needs to go to Conservation.
Right.
Okay, that's what I wanted to make sure of.
I think there was some confusion.
Okay, that, that, I shared that confusion, so that's why I wanted to make sure. Okay. All right. Anything else?
So I would just recommend the O&amp;M plan get updated to include the de-watering, either into the drywell or the roof infiltration system, and the procedures for the two-week wait in order for the chemicals to dissipate. So that should be included.
Do people have preferences or thoughts on the rooftop versus dry well? Seems to me rooftop might be better, but I don't know. Peter, do you have any thoughts on that?
Whatever is the best practice.
Yeah, so.
Well, the roof chambers already exist, as long as they're sized appropriately, and you can conclude that they are.
Yes.
That seems to be okay.
Okay. So, is something we could have a draft decision for our next meeting?
Yep.
Okay.
We only say that because the, when they're trying to de-water this, it wouldn't be during a major storm event, when that's actually trying to handle the roof runoff anyways.
Okay. Do any members of the public have any questions to come up with?
I, I have.
You have a question, go ahead.
What's the slope topography of where the pool is? Is it relatively flat, or what's?
So it's tucked in a low spot that does drain this way ever so slightly. We are picking up the grade, but not such that we're trapping water here. The water will still be able to go where it's trying to go now. The pitch on the patio will be slight to direct stormwater towards the trench that runs the perimeter of the proposed patio.
See, I'm just trying to get a sense of how much land disruption and whether you have to do any cutting or filling.
We're gonna have to cut a few trees, and we are proposing to fill a little bit. We've got a small retaining wall here. So we're gonna try to balance, there's actually a small cut here and a small fill here. I think we'll have enough material on site that we won't have to import anything. We'll probably have to remove a little bit of material for the pool hole.
Are you concerned about the root system and any of the trees that are remaining with the excavation?
No, we've, we've maintained enough of a buffer around it that we don't think will affect the rooftop infiltration system at all.
The root system of the existing trees?
I'm sorry?
The root system of the existing trees.
So those, those trees that we, we will be removing are very close to the excavation. It's here, 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 and here. I think there's about four of them, but the remaining trees should be fine. The, the clients wanna keep as many trees as possible.
So, this is the case, it's a relatively small project, but have we had anybody review this from a technical perspective?
Just John Bojazey did the stormwater review.
Oh, okay.
The town engineer, yep.
Okay.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, so I don't think we have any further questions, so we'll have a draft decision written up and try to decide, take a vote on the next, at the next meeting. Great. Great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right. 701 Salem Street, 701 Salem Street Realty Trust. This is a continued public hearing. Application for a special permit, site plan review, parking under Part 1, off-street parking and loading, Part 3, site plan review, and 195-10.7 of the North Andover zoning bylaw to allow for the construction of an 8,700 square foot addition to an existing building to be used for mixed-use retail restaurant together with associated parking spaces, stormwater management facilities, landscaping signage, and other site improvements. The project is located within the general business zoning district. Gene, wanna give us a, where we are?
In your packets tonight is a presentation that was submitted, I believe, yesterday, as well as a couple of comments that were submitted since the weekend. So I emailed a couple over the weekend, the rest I did not email, and you have my comments.
Okay. So what we'll do is we'll hear from the applicant and anyone on his team about any changes, anything you've done since our last meeting. If you'd like to address any of the comments that have been submitted, you can do that now, or you can do it if, after people speak, after the applicant and anyone from his team talks and answers our questions. Then we'll have anyone who wishes to speak on this come up and go from there. Go ahead.
Good evening and thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the planning board. My name is Jim Zanakis, and along with my cousin Michael, we are the owner of the two commercial properties located at 695 and 701 Salem Street. For the last 14 years, my home has been at 687 Salem Street, which is one of only two properties that directly abut the commercially zoned area. My family has been in business in this location for 21 years, and in that time, we have seen significant growth in the demand for services that we provide. When we began planning the project that is before you, we looked at what the permitted uses are under general business zoning. Eventually, we settled on the idea of expanding the existing stores and offering additional services to our customers. During the planning stage, we looked at the existing laws of the town of North Andover and sought to design the property within the framework of those laws. Our building design does not require any zoning or conservation relief. We are in compliance with all relevant setbacks and building height requirements. We are well under the minimum percentages for lot coverage, maximum percentages for lot coverage, and our landscaping and lighting plans are in accordance with existing town bylaws. We also looked at how we can fix some of the deficiencies of our existing design. Over the years, we have noticed that our parking lot is too small to accommodate large vehicles such as landscaper trucks with trailers. Part of the problem is that the existing parking lot is a dead end at both sides and does not go entirely around the building. There is an entrance and exit on Salem Street as well as Abbott Street, but cars cannot go all the way around. Also, there is no defined space currently for loading and receiving. This creates the potential for congestion along Salem Street and Abbott Street as well within the parking area itself. The design of the new lot is a significant improvement. We will now have two-lane traffic around the entire building. In addition, there is a space in the back right section of the lot that is designated for loading and receiving. We have improved the curb cuts so that vehicles can enter and exit more freely. And at the suggestion of the town, we moved the Salem Street entrance to be far away from the Abbott Street corner, and this is designed in accordance with public safety concerns. At the first two Planning Board public hearings, our neighbors expressed concern regarding the existing traffic pattern. Although the new building will, the new building design will address these concerns, we immediately implemented a new parking plan to help until we can make more significant changes. In June, we reached out to all of our vendors to see if they could send smaller delivery trucks whenever possible. In such cases, instead, we will have a box truck deliver instead of an 18-wheeler, or a cargo van instead of a truck. We requested fewer deliveries from our vendors each week wherever possible. We also informed our staff and many of our customers on where they should be parking, reminded them to be as respectful as possible of the neighborhood. After the first two public hearings, we also heard that there needs to be a long-term solution to where landscaper vehicles can park. We looked at parking spaces 3 through 8, as well as 1, 2, 69, and 70, as being able to accommodate larger vehicles. After the July 9th meeting, we revised the plans to show spaces 3 through 8 with deeper space, allowing a longer vehicle to pull straight in and park, as opposed to turning into a conventional parking space. We are happy to designate those spaces as being preferred parking for larger vehicles and to post signage to that effect. We believe that this will significantly help alleviate the parking congestion along Abbott, Salem, and Keys. After the first two public hearings, we also heard that the new building height was of concern to the neighbors. Although the original plan was well below the maximum of 35 feet, we reduced the building height by six feet to match as close as possible to the existing J&amp;M building. At the last two public hearings, we also heard that the planning board would prefer there to be a fence along the front property line along Salem Street. We believe that this is not an ideal solution for reasons previously discussed at the hearings. However, we included it in the most recent plan. We have also approached the two abutters across Salem Street and the one abutter across Abbott Street, and have offered to install arborvitae's or any other barrier for screening purposes along their property lines and in lieu of a fence. We believe that this provides significantly better screening from light and sound. As of today, we have only heard back from the neighbor on Abbott Street who has accepted the offer of creating the landscape buffer. The town of North Andover has previously stated through its master planning committee that the desire to have greater commercial development in the out-country section of North Andover. We believe that this project helps to achieve that stated goal. Since before the first public hearing, we have been communicating with the neighbors and abutters. Our goal has been to have an open and transparent conversation about the expansion. As evidenced by the changes to the plans before you, we have worked hard to address their concerns. Throughout the hearing process, we have done everything that the planning board has asked of us, both technically and with respect to the abutters. Since the proposed plans became public in June, we have heard from hundreds of our customers in the neighborhood who are supportive of our proposal and excited to see the new design. This year, my family will begin our 40th consecutive year of small business ownership in North Andover. We intend for this expansion to be a true asset to the community, and we look forward to providing top-quality service to the people of the town for many more years to come. Thank you for your time.
All right. gentlemen, do you have anything that you wish to add, or that was covered a lot?
Yeah, I think that, for the record, my name's Phil Henry with Civil Design Group. I guess just to supplement what Jim had said, aside from what he mentioned about parking and site circulation, from a technical standpoint, there was a second peer review letter from Horsley Woodin, which had, I think, two, two or three comments, half of which they agreed to, they agree with us in accepting a condition on certain items. And then there were two items that we had to include, which was the illicit discharge statement as a standalone document, and also to show where certain temporary staging items were gonna be during construction. And we've shown that we have not received a letter back from Horsley Woodin, but I would assume that that would, that would, our responses would be sufficient.
Looks like, it looks like the letter. Oh, no, I see yours, but it looks, it does look like it's sufficient. Okay, great.
And then Conservation had some comments regarding landscaping replacements. We had removed and replaced, or, you know, those, those proposed trees. And then the fire department wanted us to show the truck circling around the entire property, which, which is shown on this plan here. And then the water department, there was some clarification on services. We are reusing the existing service that currently serves the, the current building, so we can expand upon that existing infrastructure. So other than that, you know, we echo the comments that Jim had, had made by elongating those parking spaces, adding signage, and adding that opaque fence that Mr. Simons has suggested at the last hearing. So I think, in summary, we, we actually, you know, we took the comments and the abutters' comments very specifically, and we tried to address each one itemized.
Because I think it's important to emphasize that point is, I took away three or four things. Maybe you can do the mod orders again. Show where the parking is for the oversized vehicles.
Sure. So, so these parking spaces here, we thought there was an opportunity to elongate those parking spaces above and beyond a typical 18-foot-long space, because we had, we had room to do so, just based on the geometry of relaying out the proposed parking. So these, these six spaces here are 26 feet long. So they're eight feet longer than, than a typical parking space. And I'd also note that they are also not restricted by head-in parking on the other side, too. So, you know, we're not counting the potential overhang availability to, to said vehicle. And we've added signage that, that represents that as well. There are two parallel spaces along the building here, spaces 1 and 2, that we've identified for trailer parking, or, you know, a landscape truck, or whatnot, or even, or even a large, single-unit vehicle. The, there is a parking space back here that is striped accordingly, but as you can see, there is, there is, there's ample space right here that would not interfere with normal circulation around the building. And then there's also a space over here, space 69, that also allows for an oversized vehicle as well. So I think, I think in summary, I think, I think no one would, would dispute that this is an improvement over the existing conditions just by mere of parking and site circulation. The fact that you can circulate around the building is definitely an improvement over the existing condition.
And, and can talk about the, the reduced height? So one, it was the height of the new market was gonna be, and that's been reduced to six feet, I believe, Jim said?
Almost six feet, right, Tom?
About.
Yeah, almost six feet.
Okay. So is it just sort of, is the way to look at it, it just comes down, or what?
We did, Tom Calvin with LaGrasse Associates. What we did was, we reduced the height of the perimeter wall by two feet, and then we adjusted the pitch of the high roof, going from an eight pitch to a six pitch. All of that dropped, that ridge of the high roof by about five foot nine.
And you added the fence to the plan, as well as potentially putting arbor, either and/or putting some screening on the neighbors' property if they consent, which I think is.
Yeah, I think, as Mr. Zanakis has indicated, he, he went door-to-door and spoke to these folks across Abbott Street, and then spoke to the two abutters right across from Salem Street, offering some off-site vegetation. That's my understanding, and I'm sure you'll hear from them tonight, so I certainly don't wanna speak for them. But in lieu of that, we, we are proposing a four-foot-high opaque fence. And I think it's also important to note that we were proactive, and most notably, the owner was, the owner of this, of this site was proactive in, in implementing some of the deficiencies that are gonna be noticed tonight through, through the abutters' presentation.
Okay. Did we have someone from the, from the police department that was gonna speak to traffic a little bit?
Lieutenant Landon is here. I don't know if he wanted to speak after the abutters or before.
No, I think, I think before would probably be better.
Okay.
Good evening, Lieutenant, thank you.
Good evening. Lieutenant Dan Landon from the police department. Tonight, we'll, I'll address just safety issues we have, nothing with the land use, the quality of life issues. The traffic study had no major issues on all the projects that are going forward this evening. Our biggest concern with the police department is sightlines. When you're putting in the fences and shrubs on any sites, the further they are towards the road, if the people can't exit and have that clear view as clear as they should be able to see if there wasn't anything there, so we want that, any sightlines clear, so they have the furthest point that they can see without anything there, without any plantings, without any signs, without any fencing. That's our biggest concern from the safety issue. On this project, Salem Street on both sides actually is already zoned for no parking. There's one side, one sign on the side of the store, and then maybe two signs on the opposite side. So they could add more signs, a couple more signs. We don't have, really have an issue there with the parking. We used to, prior to it being not posted, people used to park on the edge of Salem Street. The Abbott Street, there is currently an issue there with parking on the sidewalk. The police department would recommend to the board of selectmen, they might wanna review and add no-parking signs on the store side of Abbott Street, to keep them off the sidewalk. Trucks, mostly landscaped trucks or other vehicles, they're going onto the sidewalk to leave two lanes of traffic. So they're trying to do the right thing, but they are creating a safety issue by blocking the sidewalk. So at that point, we'd put, we'd advise to have no stop, no parking signs on that side. On the opposite side of Abbott Street, it doesn't appear to be an issue there if we don't have the people parked on the sidewalk. At Abbott and Salem Street, at the intersection, there is a clearing on the edge of the road where the trucks and trailers can pull completely off, and that is fine with us, it doesn't create a safety issue. And concerning Keys Way, we don't have any safety issues with that. That's what the board of selectmen address for quality of life issue, what they wanna do, if they wanna do on the corner, but that's gonna kick it back to the neighbor's house, unless they do the whole street with no parking. The current project has a larger lot, lot larger lot, hopefully to alleviate all the traffic parked on the street. The entrance, as stated earlier, was moved from Abbott Street further down Salem Street to get off the intersection directly, which is an improvement for us, for the safety factors. And on this one, that's all I have at this point, unless you have any questions.
Any other questions? Thank you, that was very helpful.
I guess the, the one question that, that I would have is that if, if down the road there's a problem on Keys Way, is that something that primarily is sort of the, do the, the board of select would take the direction from the police department on what to do? Or how does that work if?
They ask for a recommendation, but they're solely in charge of placing, determining whether it's a no-parking zone or not. So if there is an issue.
Do you need more recommendations?
If there's an issue, we'll give them a recommendation. As I said, we don't see right now that there's a safety issue. It may be a quality of life issue for the neighbors, but that's for the, it's gonna be for the board of selectmen to determine what their action is there. For the sidewalk portion on Abbott Street, that would be a safety concern for us.
Right.
But again, to clarify, still, board of selectmen would have to designate that as no-parking?
Yes, it's, everything is the board of selectmen in their realm for no-parking zones.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So why don't we take any public comment at this point?
Good evening. My name is Jessica O'Donnell, and I live at 634 Salem Street with my husband, James, and our three young children. I'm here tonight to address concerns we have regarding the expansion of 695 to 701 Salem Street. I'm here to request of the planning board that in holding with their philosophies to maintain and protect the integrity and quality of life in North Andover, place strict conditions on the approval of this special permit, if approved, by prohibiting the consumption of alcohol on premise and restricting the hours of operation to current closing hours of operation. Currently, according to the Takis and J&amp;M Country Store website, the hours of operation are till 9:00 PM. While the particular lot where the construction is being proposed may be located within the general business zoning district, and while Salem Street is used as a thoroughfare for many of us, the area directly surrounding Salem Street, 695 to 701 Salem Street, is made up of single-family residences. The homes are filled with young children. Allowing the expansion of a business that intends to serve alcohol on premise to customers will put our neighborhood at risk for potential deterioration due to crime, disorderly conduct, speeding, and car accidents. It is common practice to require that alcohol may not be served on premise within a specified distance of schools, churches, playgrounds, or hospitals. There's no reason that this should not also be the case for distance from residences. Our neighborhood is not an appropriate location for a bar or a restaurant serving alcohol. And this is an unprecedented situation in North Andover. Currently, there is no other restaurant serving alcohol in such a heavily settled residential area. Another major concern I have is regarding the hours of operation. Currently, the plaza is only open until 9:00 PM. By not placing restrictions on hours of operation, this allows the plaza to stay open later than 9:00 PM, thus further affecting the traffic, noise, light, and safety issues that will deteriorate our neighborhood. Traffic at the current plaza creates a hazard for our family while driving and walking with our small children in the vicinity, as reflected by the number of parking spaces being. As reflected by the number of parking spaces being proposed, this expansion will result in increased vehicle and truck deliveries going through our neighborhood, which will negatively impact the environment and safety. When large tractor-trailers come to deliver and turn into the plaza, it will cause a major backup onto Salem Street. Delivery hours should also be limited to daytime non-peak traffic hours. There are residences surrounding this property, and school buses are dropping kids off and picking them up during the, at morning hours and afternoon hours. And it's also not fair for any neighbors to have to listen to deliveries overnight. This major expansion will create further noise pollution caused by the increased truck and vehicle traffic. This concern is especially acute if the expanded business is allowed to have service, music, and/or alcohol sales in an outdoor patio area. A public nuisance could be created, or worsened. I'd also like to state that our neighborhood is extremely quiet after nine P M, there's minimal traffic. And I think it's fair to say for most of us that we appreciate that peace. The current plans for this expansion also show a large parking lot illuminated by many light fixtures. Saturation lighting of this kind produces glare and can impact the ecology and wildlife. It can also affect neighboring residences. Light pollution will further affect residences by two to three hours more per day minimum, if the hours are not restricted. The planning board's philosophy encourages economic growth and the enhancement of North Andover's quality of life. Allowing alcohol consumption on premise, no restriction of hours, further noise, safety, and traffic concerns will further compromise the quality of life in our neighborhood. I'm happy for the applicant to respond, but I'm truly here to formally request that the planning board please consider the detrimental effects that this will have on our neighborhood. If you don't outright deny this application, we urge you to place strict conditions on the permit, as is allowed by your charter, including, but not limited to prohibiting the consumption of alcohol on premise and restricting the hours of operation to the current closing time of nine P M. I thank you for your time and consideration, and trust that you will do what's best to maintain the safety of our community, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, uh, my name is Pat Garvin, uh, and I live at fifty-one Nutmeg Lane, and I'm here today in support of J and M's proposal expansion of their business. I moved to North Andover in two thousand and six, and my wife and I quickly discovered the convenience of J and M stores. We stopped there for coffee in the morning, we drop by for quick takeout at night when it's, when we're too busy to cook dinner. When the Columbia disaster occurred last year, we found ourselves unprepared. I had turned off the gas as a precaution, like many others. Therefore, we couldn't cook, everything was closed. If you remember that night, all local stores were closed and traffic was a nightmare, making it impossible to drive to surrounding towns. However, J and M was open for business. So we and a lot of other people on that night all had the same predicament, we were all buying dinner at J and M. Over the last thirteen years, I've watched J and M slowly grow their business, and now they wanna grow again, and add a sit-down dining service. I think this is a great addition to our area. There has been discussion regarding the impact of traffic to the area. Let me first state that traffic on Salem Street is mainly impacted by the number of residents in the area. After driving this road for thirteen years, I do not see any additional traffic of any significance brought by J and M and, and the stores in that plaza. If there's one improvement I would like to see, it's the entry-exit and the general getting-around of the parking lot. And I'm happy to see that the plan addresses that issue. As a community, we have benefited by having quick and easy access to convenient items, Dunkin' Donuts, a dry cleaning service, an ATM, fine wines, quick takeout. And more than just convenience, we've really benefited from having access to these services during challenging times, such as during a snowstorm or during the Columbia gas disaster. J and M has grown their business to provide all these services. Now they wanna offer us more and ensure that their business remains competitive in a strong, growing economy. They have purchased the adjacent property for their expansion, it is zoned correctly for their desired business goals, and I believe we should respect that desire and let them go about this building plan. Thank you.
Hey, how's it going? My name is, uh, Joe Barber, one thirty-two Abbott Street. I've been a resident of North Andover for thirteen years, and a resident of Abbott Street for the past nine years. In that time, I'm probably embarrassed with how much money I've spent at, uh, J and M and Takis beats in, in terms of just general business, whether it be Dunkin' Donuts, takeout for, you know, a family, or, you know, just paying a quick up, quick grocery item up. You know, I have two young kids as well, I live on Abbott Street. We've found, you know, nothing but value from J and M and Takis being in the neighborhood. And I think, you know, looking at any further services ever provided by J and M, we're looking at as a welcome addition to the neighborhood. As people have already addressed here, the main concerns that we've had in the past have been parking of commercial vehicles on Abbott Street. You know, I find, as the gentleman before me just stated, that the majority of the traffic on Abbott Street that I see as a problem is not generated from J and M or anybody, any business there, but actually from probably people going to and from sergeant's school and picking up their children there, where I have a, a young child. So, in summation, you know, I think anything that adds value to the neighborhood is a welcome addition for me and my family, and, uh, you know, I have no, I guess, opinion one way or the other in terms of influencing you guys, but I just wanted to state my case in support of Jim and Mike and the family.
My name is James Greer, live at seven ten Salem Street.
Hold on, so if you're gonna give us, you can just give us stuff and then go, when you go to the lecture.
Alright.
So, uh, Mr. Greer, uh, I know we have your presence, could, can you just have the, what, can you just tell us your address, please, sir?
Seven ten Salem Street.
Okay, um, so I know we have, um, you submitted some documents that are in our packet.
Yes.
Um, so we've had the chance to look at those, I would just ask, um, do, any statements you wanna make, just keep it to a couple minutes or less.
Okay, I'll, I'll be, I'll be brief.
Okay, thank you.
Um, if you look at this document I just gave you, I spent the last eight days walking around my neighborhood. And not only do I speak for myself, but I speak for thirty-eight other families between Nutmeg and Summer on Salem Street, Nutmeg, uh, Periwinkle, Nutmeg to Salem on Abbott, North Cross from Abbott to Ray, Easy Street, and Keys Way. There are seventy-six houses or less in this neighborhood, and as you saw in my, um, presentation that I submitted, thirty-eight voted against this, or signed this petition, I thought, you voted against this. Two voted for, three abstained, and four wouldn't talk to me at all. So, with that, I'm not gonna sit here and argue with, uh, setback zoning and all this. I wanna talk about outright as a neighborhood to pursue our own endeavors. Why is it that we can get together as a town and vote down this Lucent thing last year, and we as a neighborhood can't vote down this? Now, statistically speaking, we won the day with the neighborhood, alright? We were thirty-eight votes to two, well, now thirty-eight to four. So I would concede we go from ninety-six percent against to ninety-two. Overwhelmingly, our neighborhood is against this. Quality of life, parking, safety, if you look at my report, you see trucks up on the sidewalk, there was one on the sidewalk today. My favorite picture is the tree bucket truck parked right in front of the no parking zone that, um, Lieutenant Landon had mentioned. Alright, parking, no parking signs are there, they don't mean a damn thing, alright? Yeah, could you start going through a few slides?
So, we, we haven't, we're, we're not gonna do an entire slideshow.
Okay, I'd, I'd like to, you saw the picture of the slide with the horse trailer up on the sidewalk?
Yep.
No, officer, if you got a tractor-trail towing horses parked on the sidewalk, would you consider that a nuisance or a danger to the pedestrians?
So, so, you can just make your points.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to make my points, I'm really not good at this stuff.
You're doing fine, you're doing fine, and you've made a, a-
But anyway-
Very thorough presentation, I think we understand what you're, where you're going with it.
Yeah, the fact of the matter is, you know, this is our neighborhood too, alright? This business- Second, yeah, alright. Anyway, this is a, just a-
So this is linked to the agenda now? It was submitted yesterday, so when the agenda got posted, it wasn't there, it has since been added, and it's in hard copy to the board, so that they have it.
Okay, so anyway, the point I'm trying to make, sir, is this neighborhood doesn't exist for the benefit of J and M, definitely, this is all our neighborhood. And, like I said, the majority of the neighbors do not want this. Alright, and like I said, I've given you the, uh, what do you call it there, the petition signed by thirty-eight of my neighbors. I even went as far as giving you the two that abstained, actually, three abstained, but he just sent me a text, alright? So, this is clear beyond a shadow of a doubt that our neighborhood doesn't want this. And if we wanna statistically go out to the rest of the homes, we're still gonna carry the day by eighty percent.
So, I, I guess I'm not sure if this is, if your point is rhetorical or not, but it, it's not something that's subject to referendum, right? So-
No, 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 the point is, yeah, it's, it's, yes, it is rhetorical, sir.
Okay, I just, I just wasn't sure.
I know, 'cause the point I was trying to make is, we got together as a town and voted on this Lucent thing. This, this isn't a special town meeting, sir, but this was our town meeting. Our neighbors spoke by signing that petition.
Like, let me ask you a question, it's something different, I might, it'll try to be difficult, but if you went around and took a poll the same way of the existing thing, probably everybody would vote the same way, right?
I'm sorry?
Of the existing, uh, commercial, uh, project on the site, you, you would end up with the same answer?
Maybe, maybe not. I, I frequent the place too, I use the dry cleaner, I find it a convenience. What I don't want is a twelve thousand, six hundred square foot building in and around a neighborhood with buildings, or single-family homes, with footprints in the one thousand to two thousand range. I mean, this is not a piece of architecture that's gonna add to our neighborhood, it's gonna stand out like a sore thumb. I mean, it's, it's, I consider patently absurd to say that this actually fits in our neighborhood. Right, and like the woman said from six thirty-four, who was one of the very first ones to sign my petition, we don't want an alcohol, you know, serving alcohol in our neighborhood. And people buzzing down Abbott Street after they've had a few pops, staying up watching the game, whatever. You know, this is, this is our neighborhood too.
Okay, thank you.
Okay? Now, we should all go take a look at that presentation.
Can I ask the advocate a question? I, I, I wanna get the sizes right. What is the size of the existing structure and what's the size of the proposed addition, in terms of square footage?
It's, it's the addition of eighty-seven hundred plus thirty-nine hundred.
That's already there?
Yeah.
So it's, okay.
Well, there, there's a portion of, of the existing that's being taken down.
So what is it today, what, what's this total square footage today?
It's like forty-three hundred, forty-three hundred?
And when the smoke clears, it's how much?
Yeah, it's fifty-five, and then, and then the new is twelve-three.
Okay.
And, and keep in mind, we're also adding an additional lot to it, of course.
Right, no, 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 I understand that, and both lots are zoned for general business.
Correct.
But I just wanted to get the, the delta, the decides of the construction, yeah.
You know, the second largest building on Salem Street is the police sta-, I'm sorry, the fire station at twenty-five hundred square feet. Alright. Like I said, the point is, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, the neighbors have spoken, you know?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Hi, I'm, uh, James O'Donnell, six thirty-four Salem Street, my wife actually just got up a few minutes ago, I just wanted to make kind of two quick points that I'm not sure if anyone else has said so far. Regarding the parking situation, you know, everyone's talking about, you know, they're expanding seventy spaces, gonna alleviate the, uh, the traffic in the area. But they're not talking, but if there are seventy spaces at the existing location today, there'd be no issue with parking. Seventy spaces, when you're more than doubling the size of the building, it's an open question of exactly what the effect's gonna be. I don't know if there's gonna be, if that's gonna solve the issues of access to Salem or parking on the site. The other thing I'd like to know is kind of the unique nature of the business district. So, like, where J and M is today, if you kind of look at the zoning board, and you kind of look where we have business districts zoned in town, it's very unique. It's more than a mile from the nearest business district, and there's nowhere in town that's like that. The majority of business in town is located on one twenty-five, one fourteen, Mass Ave, Main Street. There is nothing nearby here that kind of offsets it. So it's a very kind of, it is, it's a unique business district in a heavily residential area. I mean, I think the current business is great, I will admit, I go there all the time. If the six-packs were a dollar cheaper, I'd go there more often. But, you know, I can lock there for my house, I do appreciate what they do today for me. I just, I get concerned if we're talking about taking something that's reasonable and sized for the neighborhood today, and expanding it to something that is, well, again, it's more than twice the size, it's gonna change the character of the neighborhood, and it doesn't line up with anything else in any other business district. There's no similar business district in town to really kind of measure off it, but it, it seems drastically different than anything else we have anywhere else around. That's, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I just have a quick comment, my name is Karen Robbins, I live at twenty Nutmeg Lane, it's the first house on Nutmeg. Um, a couple questions, I, when I moved here, I didn't, I loved J and M, it was one of the reasons we came from the city, so we had a little place to go. Never realized the building to the right of it was zoned mixed-use, and, um, as, I guess, they've purchased that house, that na-, that house has become sort of a parking lot. So my question was, what, are there any restrictions on making sure that, Jim, your house, the next house, I worry about where the park, if, if there are seventy places for people to park, where are all the workers going to park? Is that gonna become in your driveway, is that gonna extend down the street? Secondly, I'm the one who mows the lawn on my street, that land that I don't own, but I take care of it, constantly picking up Dunkin' Donuts cups, nips, constantly. So my question is, is there any, anything we could put in place to make sure that the neighborhood, if it's impacted really negatively in terms of garbage, or drunk people walking up and down the street, is there anything to make sure that doesn't happen? As one who already does pick up after the folks from J and M, not the people who own it, but the people who go there, something just to think about for the planning board. Thank you.
The, the employees parking back, generally, right? Yeah, so it's my understanding the employees parking back, uh, in terms of the trash, I mean, as far as I know, the Dunkin' Donuts itself isn't changing the other aspects, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what we can make as a condition, but we'll think about it.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, at, at one level, it's something that's a little bit impossible of a police, but I think it's sort of in the spirit of good neighbors. You got, you gotta try to figure out a better way to reduce the litter. I mean, somebody leaves the site and throws the litter out the window, there's nothing you can do about it, but at the same time, maybe there are some things to mitigate it.
Yeah, okay, um, so we don't have a draft decision for today, but I think, at least, I'd be interested in hearing people's thoughts on what we should put into that draft decision. Um, some stuff that has come up, well, first, I, I do wanna say that, at least for me, I appreciate that, um, the applicant has, uh, attempted to listen to the comments that this board has made, and more important, and just as importantly, to comments that neighbors have made, and incorporated those into the most recent design. So they changed the parking, signage on the parking I really like, working on screening, lowering the building height, I mean, those are things that we said were problems, and they've addressed them. So I think, um, you know, that, that doesn't necessarily win the day, lose the day, but I think it's important that you went out and did that, and we hope that all projects kind of go that way. Not a lot of them actually do, so I particularly really appreciate that you went out and did that. I think we heard from the police department, so, to me, the things that I'd want in a, um, approval would be that the signage, um, that, that there is particular signage for where large vehicles should park, uh, that there is appropriate screening with the fence and/or with the, um, screening on, across the street. So if all the neighbors that are affected agree to the screening across the street, then, then great, but if they don't, then there should at least be a fence, maybe both, then I'd like to hear what people have to think about that. Terms of hours of operation, right now, there are none, like, none official. I don't think it's our, I don't think we were the right people to make that decision. I think the licensing board, if they're applying for a liquor license, they can determine whether or not they should get a liquor license, what hours they should be. That, to me, that's a licensing board issue, and I think, one, I don't think we'd have the authority to say no alcohol, I think that's out of our purview. But even setting the hours in terms of a liquor establishment, I think that's a light- But even setting the hours in terms of a liquor establishment, I think that's the licensing board's, uh, role. So I, I would be hesitant to, to establish anything there. So I don't know what other people thought. I mean, again, making sure that the lighting matches up with the design, going back, checking those things. So those are things that I would want in a decision. I don't know if there are people's comments. John?
I, I, I think one thing that I would like to see, which I think we've started to do with a lot of our site plans, because you can't dictate literally every single thing you want to have happen, is to have a series of reviews, uh, on a semi-annual or annual basis for the first few years after the, uh, the project is in operation, to look at the, all of the issues that we really talked about, to look at the traffic, to look at the parking, to look at the litter, to look at the lighting and so forth, and see if there's anything that we do to adjust. I, I think also there's part of this, obviously, is not within our domain, as you suggested, that the Board of Selectmen, uh, and the Police Department have greater responsibility than we do over, uh, off-site, um, parking and issues like that. But if we can have a forum periodically, I think that gets those issues on the table. And, and I think it's important to do that. So that was something I think we've started to put in a lot of our decisions. I think we ought to do it again. I think your point, uh, on hours of operation, I agree with you to the extent that it involves liquor. Uh, that is, you know, we, we can't, uh, put it in a condition of our decision, no liquor's allowed, that's not our jurisdiction, as you said. But even hours of operation, I agree with you. I, I think in general, I, I, I'm a little bit more willing to put some constraints in it of like hours of truck delivery and things of that nature, just to mitigate, um, you know, somebody coming at five o'clock in the morning or eleven o'clock at night. I don't think that would generally occur, but I, 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 I think we should put something in our decision related to that.
Can you get us something or to the blur about what your plan or what your general hours for delivery are, so assuming that-
Currently, or what we would be?
What we, what you would be anticipating?
Perhaps during hours of operation, I mean, with a limit at night?
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the point is well-taken, that deliveries at midnight would probably be bad for everyone in general, you know? So when you would be anticipating deli-, more, more for the delivery trucks than than hours?
Two deliveries that happened before we opened for business, one with Dunkin' Donuts, the other one with newspapers, both are critical to proper functioning of the stores.
Okay. What time do those deliveries take place? Do you, do you know?
Long before I wake up.
Okay. Is anyone?
Between three and five.
Okay. All right. And nighttime deliveries? Do you have night?
No.
Okay, so maybe we look at the nighttime. I mean, I think the nighttime is more, uh, the issue. People read newspapers still? Okay. Um, all right.
Hey, John, I would, it's just, I think even Market Basket has restrictions on delivery times.
Okay, do you want to check?
Their direct store delivery, like bread deliveries can come before seven, but large tractor-trailers not before seven.
Okay.
And dumpster pickups as well, so.
Do you wanna look at, I mean, I think that's a, that would be, do you wanna look at the timelines that they have and maybe we can incorporate them along those lines? Thank you. Kate, Peter, or?
I would echo your comments about, uh, it's impressive to see the response of the applicant to the concerns previously expressed and be interested to see if there's any more response on the part of the applicant to the concerns expressed tonight. You know, expansion, um, two and a half times the current size is, uh, certainly, uh, something that, uh, has some degree of impact to the surrounding residential neighborhood and, and it sounds like you're trying to make that work with the adjustments you've made in response to the concerns. And if there's any other, uh, manner in which the impacts to the neighborhood can be addressed, then I think we'd love, I would love to hear that.
Okay. And, and again, so in terms of the neighbors, we, we certainly appreciate your feedback and I think you've seen, hopefully, and you, some people may never agree with everything, but you've seen at least coming out and making statements has led to changes in the plan. May want it to not go forward at all, and, and like, we haven't even voted yet. We'll be voting on the next time. But I do think it's impactful, but at the same time, like I said, it's not a referendum. I think the reason we have the planning board and people that are neutral is for situations where, you know, neighbors may not agree because it impacts you differently. Um, so I think that's why we have neutral people to hopefully decide. So, so thank you for that. I think we'll continue this until August twentieth. I think that's our next meeting, right? And we'll, in debt, we're gonna vote on that date. So, and we'll try to have a draft decision out before that, so, uh, everyone can read it and make any comments at that time. Thank you very much. All right. Uh, so we will now go to, is everyone good to continue?
Yep.
Okay, so we'll do one more and then we'll see how far we get with that. Uh, let's do, we'll do the A and R, zero, four seventy-seven and five oh five Sutton Street. Request for endorsement of the approval not required plan for the properties located at five oh five Sutton Street. Assessors map seventy-four, parcels twenty-three, twenty-four and fifty-four. We will do continued public hearing, seven oh, nope, the senior center, one-story drive, four seventy-seven Sutton Street, five oh five Sutton Street and zero Sutton Street, Town of North Andover, application for special permits, site plan review, shared common driveway parking on a separate lot, satellite parking under chapter one ninety-five, article eight, part three, section one ninety-five, dash two point two, paragraph twenty-one, and section one ninety-five, eight point eight D four B of the Town of North Andover zoning bylaw to allow for the construction of a two-story thirteen thousand, five hundred square foot, uh, GFA senior center with associated amenities, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage and other site improvements within the B two and R four zoning districts. We're also gonna be hearing five oh five Sutton Street, Sutton Street Redevelopment LLC, application for special permit, site plan review, multifamily housing, common driveway modification of landscaping, requirements for off-street parking, reduction in parking, construction of a new building exceeding two thousand square feet under section one ninety-five, four point eight oh, one ninety-five, two point two, one ninety-five, eight point eight, section one ninety-five, eight point one oh of the North Andover zoning bylaw, and Mass General Law forty A, section nine, to allow for the construction of a three of three multi-story buildings with associated parking, stormwater management facilities, landscaping, signage and other site improvements, properties located within the B two zoning district. Okay, so why don't we start with the A and R? Okay.
Let me ask you this, just sort of as a devil's advocate in the A and R. Has the, uh, is the zoning board approved their variances?
No, we're back at the zoning board on August thirteenth, and that's why we've put the A and R before year. We'd like to get the A and R endorsed so that if they should grant the variances, they have the lots that they're granting them.
Or assuming they will.
Yeah, assuming they will, but it would be in place, that's all.
Okay, because if-
Otherwise, they're in position to grant a variance on lots that are not in existence yet. So this plan would-
Okay, if you're doing that, Frank, 'cause I was gonna say, if, personally, the only reason why we're carving up two lots is because it's effectively separate ownership, but it doesn't, the property does not have to be subdivided.
But it's development work.
No, it doesn't, but it doesn't have to be. What you could do is you could create easement lines and, in other words, the need for a variance only exists because you chose to format the lots. But if we didn't format the lots, you wouldn't need the variances.
Right, but the town meeting vote was to donate a certain parcel of land comprising fifty-seven thousand square feet. So, and for the, to authorize this lot to accept a donation of land.
So yes, because, but because it's a public-private and you want to keep it separate, yeah.
I mean, I know it, okay. I mean, I, I just, sort of, I would advocate a different order, but if you think that's the better order, then that's fine.
So, yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think they probably, this is a tough one, but I think someone's gotta go forward first, you know?
I guess, so.
Let, let it be us this time.
And so endorsement doesn't necessarily mean it'll be recorded if the variances don't get granted, of course, it would be recorded.
I mean, you could, you could undo it, so I suppose if you had to.
We could undo it or just not record it.
Yeah, okay.
It doesn't go through the approval, it won't be recorded.
Okay. So, let's talk about our lots and our frontage and our access.
Scott Cameron will-
Hi.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening. Talk to me about frontage.
Uh, good evening, this is the North Andover Planning Board. Um, my name is Scott Cameron with the Moore and Cameron Group. We prepared the A and R plan. Eric Loth from Sutton Street Redevelopment is also here tonight. I guess getting back to, uh, member Simmons' comments of endorsing this plan, it's really of no consequence. We can come back and adjust or extinguish or do whatever we want with these lot lines. Uh, over time, if a variance isn't granted or something doesn't happen, it's really of no consequence. So in that regard, what we're here tonight requesting your, uh, vote of endorsement for is that this plan does not constitute a subdivision under the subdivision control law, thereby making it an approval not required plan. These, the test for that, uh, in this case, uh, is that it does enjoy frontage on a public street, Sutton Street. Uh, in this, and we have the zoning minimum in the B two district. Uh, we exceed the frontage, uh, which is a hundred twenty-five feet, uh, providing two fifty-three point seven one on lot two A and two seventy-one point two nine on lot one A. Those would be the two new parcels created, uh, from the existing three that are the Knights Columbus property and four seventy-seven Sutton Street, which is a two-family dwelling. The lots do comply, uh, with every other aspect of the zoning bylaw, uh, respective dimensions and density. Uh, even with the existing buildings in place, it still complies. However, it should also be noted that by endorsing this, you are making no certification of zoning. That's the certification that is right below where the board would normally sign. So happy to entertain any questions about that. And this is the first step. We do need to create these lots in order for the zoning board to grant relief, should they choose to do so, uh, to a lot line. These would be the lot lines, and they are the same that were approved at town meeting, um, for, uh, potentially a future donation to the town.
And these lot lines are created so that we have both a Town of North Andover parcel eventually, where the senior center would be, owned by the town, correct?
Correct.
And then a separate parcel owned by the developer, uh, where the multifamily would be, and that's why we need multiple lots.
And I don't know, Gene, if you have the warrant plan still in the file, but, um, I did provide it here. So you can see the general orientation with the purple line. This is the same exact line that was presented at town meeting, which now appears here.
Does the creation of the two lots create any for the variance with the zoning board?
That's what I was just gonna say. It's Eric Loth from Sutton Street Redevelopment. The irony is, they said, gosh, now you're creating your own hardship. I, I said, well, so it's kind of a chicken and the egg. We were creating this to donate the land, but at the same time, then we have a setback issue from the lot, so it's kind of going around in circles.
So, right, yeah, so yes, it does, but the idea is that, I mean, there's this significant public benefit that everyone voted on at town meeting from doing this via public and private, right? So if they wanted to just keep it all private and not donate the land, then yeah, they wouldn't need a variance. But I think there's some good public policy behind why they're doing this. Now, we're just, and that's, I guess, all aside, that we're just voting that this plan meets the requirements, that it, it's not a subdivision. That's all we're doing, but I hope the zoning board does consider the, um, reasons why it's being done.
I think the question that they were wrestling themselves with was, if you're creating a setback issue from yourself, is that really an issue as opposed to creating one with an, an external law?
You would think that the neighbors, being yourselves, would not have an issue with it. Um, okay, uh, does anyone have any questions about or comments about the A and R itself?
No, I think it's fine, although it is funny, uh, you, you didn't specify the three old lots number. Do they have existing, um, like, the three old lots, uh, do they have numbering?
Yeah, from, uh, we wrestle with that a little bit. So you have a, a combination of a series of subdivision plans that created these three existing lots going back in time. They had different lot numbers. Uh, I believe there was a one and a two, and then there was another two. Uh, so in this case, we're, we're extinguishing those lines. It's of no relevance. We just renumbered them two A and one A, which don't exist in any of the subdivisions from the formal lots. So it creates a distinct, uh, new lot identification in the chain of title that somebody can pick up a hundred years from now and they can see that change.
I mean, I'm fine with that, although it's funny, I, when I first joined this board, there was a real estate attorney who would chastise you for not doing it the way he wanted to do it, so, uh, but I think it's okay, so.
Chastising.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, so, Gene, what's our motion here? Is it to, uh, recommend that you sign the format?
To authorize the planner to sign, to endorse the plan.
Okay, someone wanna make that?
Yes, uh, I make a motion to, uh, recommend that the planner endorse the formate plan.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right. Approved. Great. All right, so let's go to, we'll continue with the public hearing. So where do we stand, Gene, with our public hearings?
Quick update on the senior center. Um, essentially, there's no new information tonight, other than what was submitted in the planset. The geometry for the exit onto Surrey Drive has been curved, um, which the board recommended as they thought a good idea last week. I'm sorry, last hearing. Um, that has gone note for department review. So although it's in your packet tonight, it's been sent to the fire department especially, but to all departments to review that, as well as responses to the peer review comments and the department comments. A response has been submitted, um, this past Friday to all departments, so we're waiting to hear from their comments back. I anticipate, um, all of those comments should be addressed satisfactory by the twentieth here, meeting.
Okay, so I, I, I think that's great that they changed the curve of the driveway to at least encourage, uh, that right-hand turn only, at least. It's a small benefit, but a benefit nonetheless. Okay, from the app-
We also talked about a, setting up a site visit, and so I wanted to confirm that. The applicants have indicated the sixth, which is next Tuesday, at six worked for them. And I wanted to get a little bit more detail over your expectations. I didn't interpret any expectations for the senior center site, having that building state. Um, I thought it was more related to the multifamily, but I did wanna confirm that.
Let's talk about that at the end of the discussion with the applicant and the, um, members of the public. Okay. Who wants to go?
I go, sure. So an update, uh, on the multifamily, uh, part of, uh, this, this, uh, hearing. Uh, we are working through the peer review comments. Part of that included, uh, a site walk and mapping out the drainage system on Sutton Street down to Osgood and where that all goes. So I spent, uh, the day today, uh, hacking through poison ivy and thorn bushes and, uh, if I'm, uh, a swollen, chopped-up mess by the next, by the site walk next week, you'll know why. We also, uh, did stake out, uh, buildings, lot lines. We're getting prepared for the site walk next week, which we can talk about. Uh, so I do expect to have the, uh, comments addressed by the end of this week and have a, have a, uh, response to everything for the board to review. You know, as I indicated at the hearing, uh, the initial hearing, uh, there's been no comments that have changed, uh, the design. We're more fine-tuning and polishing, uh, based on the, mainly the Horstley-Witten, uh, comments on the drainage system. Just taking a little time to get through that.
So one of the big things we asked about was like the stories of the buildings and things like that. Any additional feedback you can give us on, on that?
We're, we're working on some of that. One of the things we wanted to do, uh, we talked about after the meeting internally, was trying to do two sets of renderings. One would be from the perspective of Surrey Street, and we wanted to wait until the site visit to go out there and ask neighbors permission. Because if we take a picture from Surrey Street, I don't think it's really gonna capture what their view's gonna be from the back. If we can access the backyard, take a picture of them there, I think that'll be a much more effective tool to show. So we wanna do that one, and then we wanna do one looking from, you know, from where the building would be, back towards the houses.
Okay.
So we'll have those, we should have both those for the next meeting.
Okay, great.
And then we also are working on, um, a new landscaping plan. I think we talked about a little bit the last meeting. Along the abutters, close to where Surrey Street is, uh, we asked to fill in with more trees and so forth, so that's, I don't know if we have that already, but. Yeah, it's underway, and I have the trees located that are kind of in that zone between where the building's proposed and the lot line. So that, that'll be all accurate. So we did a, a tree survey to show where the mature trees are, which ones will stay and which ones will go. So we can have that for the, for the site walk. And for, I guess, on a plan for next, next time as well.
Okay, just glad to hear you guys are working on it. That's great. Okay, uh, anybody have current questions? Okay, uh, any members of the public want to, so I, well, I guess we'll say, so I think, do you guys wanna talk about the site plan? Site walk, site visit, um, it's proposing August sixth, I assume in the evening?
And at six P M., so it's an hour earlier. I'm not sure everybody can get there for that time.
Works for me.
Works.
Okay. August sixth, six P M.? Okay, so, um, so if there's, do we have a list of abutters on Surrey Street? I imagine, are people on Surrey Street?
We have the abutter list, which are people within three hundred feet, or we could do, we can create one for all of Surrey.
Yeah, so why don't we create a list for all of Surrey, give that to you guys, and then reach out to those people. If any of them are here today, if anyone's here today that lives on Surrey and wants to talk to these folks, to give them permission to take photographs from your, um, yards or houses, I think it would certainly help us. You don't have to. You're more than welcome to say no, but I think it would be helpful information for us to have as we look at this. So, uh, talk to them after the hearing, if you wanna do that, um, and then we'll get them a- So talk to them after the hearing, if you want to do that, and then we'll get them a list, and you can talk with anyone you haven't spoken with.
You can create the abutter list right on the abutters website. Yes.
So, um, so we'll do that site visit August sixth at six P M. We talked a little bit about this. What that'll entail is walking around the property. It'll be staked out for where the proposed edge of the work is, what trees will be proposed to come down, things along those lines. I know some neighbors have said that they'd let us come into their property to see from their perspective. We're happy to do that. There won't be any deliberation at a site visit. There's no one there to record it, so with open meeting, we can't talk about, you know, about things, but we can look and get perspectives. So we'd be happy to do that. So if you're willing to let us there, you can let us know at that time, or you can let us know in advance. That would be great. So-
We'll stake the building corners as well.
So I've staked the building corners at this time, and we've located all the trees on plan. So when we're there, we can physically see where the building is, what trees are on which side of the building foundation, and we can, we can mark up a plan, or, you know, we can take a close look at that while we're there.
Okay, any members of the public want to make comments at this time? Okay, yes, no, no, okay. Looked like you were getting up. Yes, more.
Just, just a recommendation for the site walk. I would wear long pants, long socks, and boots. There's a lot of ground, poison ivy, so just be safer that way. Or you don't have to go in the wooded area, but that's really where we're gonna be walking, so.
Yeah, it's thick, you gotta brush.
Marked for any reason? I wouldn't think so.
Doesn't, doesn't seem to be the issue.
Okay.
I mean, I think we'll be able to interpolate the-
Do we, can we, where the, would we be able to see where the exit onto Surrey is?
Yeah, that would be good.
Mark the exit.
Yeah, yeah, mark the exit, maybe, for the traffic. Okay, so that will be August sixth. Then we'll come back here on August twentieth and continue the discussion. Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. All right, people want to go, keep going, or take five minutes, or just go right through to Avalon?
No.
Keep going? Okay, keep going. If anybody needs a break at any point, just raise your hand. Okay, we'll travel right along. Four High Street, R C G West Mill, M A L L C. Application for definitive subdivision approval in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-one, Section eighty-one oh, eighty-one T, and eighty-one U, and North Andover Code Section two fifty-five dash five point five to subdivide map fifty-four lot one and map fifty-three, lot twenty-five into three lots and to create a new subdivision road. This is located within the downtown overlay historic, District A, Historic Mill area, with underlying I S, R four, and general business districts. Also, four High Street, Avalon Bay Communities, Inc., application for subdivision A, definitive master's plan, special permit in accordance with Town of North Andover zoning bylaw, Section one ninety-five eighteen point two oh. Applicant proposes the construction of a market-rate rental multifamily residential community to be known as Avalon North Andover, consisting of a total of two hundred and fifty Studio one, two, and three-bedroom units to be contained within two separate five-story buildings, approximately one hundred and three thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven square feet and approximately one hundred and seventy-one thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight square feet, along with an outdoor pool, parking, stormwater management facilities, landscape signage, and other improvements to be located on approximately nine point four four acres of land. This is located within the downtown overlay District A, Historic Mill area, with underlying I S and R four zoning districts, with all buildings proposed within the boundaries of the underlying I S district. Good morning, good evening.
Hello.
Hi, can you introduce yourselves?
Sure. David Gillespie from Avalon Bay Communities.
I'm Vinod Kalikiri with Ty and Barn, I'm a traffic engineer.
Hi, David, thank you for coming back tonight. So why don't you give us an update of any developments since the last hearing? And then we'll talk about traffic. Then we'll have public comment and maybe some discussion with the board.
Yep, great, thank you very much. Again, David Gillespie from Avalon, happy to be here tonight to talk about traffic and transportation. We respectfully request, last time we spoke, we talked about, talking about the subdivision today and onsite traffic and parking, as well as offsite traffic and parking. We're requesting that we just cover offsite impacts tonight, only because, based on feedback that we've received from this board and from abutters and from town staff and the Conservation Commission last week, we're gonna need to make some serious changes to the site plan. So until those changes are done, we think it's premature to review some of those other comments that may have come forth over time. So give us a chance to rework our site plan and try to resolve as many of those conflicts as we can and come back to you. That said, the revised proposal will be of a similar use, in the sense that it'll be multifamily rental apartments. It will be less dense, it will have fewer units. But in that sense, this is a conservative presentation that Vinod's giving today, because we'll have less impacts based on his analysis with fewer units. But with that, I know there's a lot of questions and a lot of comments about traffic, so I thought that it was worth it for us to have him speak tonight so that we could incorporate any of those comments into our revised thinking, as well as we work on that plan next.
So that makes sense to me. Some things that we're gonna have to discuss, and I think we'll do the traffic person discuss, the subdivision. As of now, we have to make a decision and have it filed in the clerk's office by September sixth. So our next meeting is August twentieth. At that point, we'll either, we'll need either one of the following most likely, either a extension of the date for making a decision, or if the plan's really gonna be significantly adjusted, especially with the subdivision and the lots and things like that, potentially even withdrawing it without prejudice and then refiling that, if it's gonna be different, you know? So you don't have to decide that now, but on August twentieth, we'll just need a decision, because obviously, if you're reconfiguring it, we can't approve this particular subdivision, nor would you want us to. So we'll just need a decision on that. I think then also, so I appreciate that you're gonna go back and listen to some of the things that we've said, some things that the neighbors have said, things that Concom has said. So it may make sense for members of the board, if you have particular thoughts or concerns that you'd like to see addressed in revised plans, it may be helpful for you guys to consider. Because it would be silly for you to come back and say, this is what we were thinking, and for us to say, well, no, that's not what we're thinking at all, you know, to the extent that we can. Okay, so great, so why don't, with all those caveats out of the way, why don't we talk about some offsite traffic?
Thank you. Good evening. Again, for the record, my name is Vinod Kalikiri. I'm a traffic engineer with the firm of Ty and Barn. I'm a professional engineer, a professional traffic operations engineer with over twenty years of experience working on transportation, transportation planning, traffic engineering projects, not unlike what you're seeing today and what I'll be presenting. I'm the traffic engineer of record on this project. There's a pretty substantial traffic study that was submitted to the town, over three hundred pages. It's dated June twenty-seventh. It's gone through a pretty extensive peer review by the, by an independent consultant hired by the town, as well as town staff. And my goal today is to give you a big-picture overview of the traffic study. I have about twenty slides or so here. So I'll go through the study relatively quickly, touching on the highlights, but obviously, we can get back to specifics as we, you know, either after the presentation or we can interrupt along the way. Just given the way the visuals are set up, I would request, Gene, to advance the slides as we go through. So just to set the expectations for the presentation tonight, I'll go over the scope of the study, how we came about with the scope of the analysis and the study that we put together for this project. Relatively in-depth discussion of what's out there today, how the transportation network, the roadways, the traffic, pedestrians, transit, how all of these features are functioning today. And then I'll talk about project-specific traffic characteristics. What does this project bring on top of what's out there today? And then after that, I'll talk about some areas that we have identified as part of this study that could benefit from some improvements. Again, that's an ongoing discussion with town staff and with the boards, but initially, as part of the study, as is typically required, you know, we do come up with some recommendations that can be considered further as we go through the process. And then I'll wrap up with the summary of next steps. Thank you. So a traffic study in general could mean a lot of things. It could be a simple technical memo that talks about how many cars on a street versus a very detailed study, very similar to the document that we had put together, that looks at a whole series of things. So the study that we put together, I'm not gonna read every bullet, but it touches on some of the key focus areas that are of interest to the town, what we have heard through the scoping process and through some of the commentary over the last several months on what this project means to that neighborhood and to the town. So we look at various aspects and build a traffic study around those features. The key thing to remember on that is that this is all, the methodology and the procedures that we've used for this study are well-defined by the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Even though the project and the roadways are not within Mass D O T jurisdiction, the D O T has defined how projects of this type and scale should be analyzed so that there is a common platform for review of this project. So we have followed pretty much every, every one of those guidelines to the T, and that's one of the things that the town's consultant has done, is to confirm that we have followed the appropriate methodologies and our findings are based in accepted procedures. So those are the areas that we'll look at. Just a quick overview of the scope of the traffic study. Something with the font there. But essentially, there are the three major steps that we'd go through for our traffic impact analysis, transportation planning study of this type. Again, there is an existing conditions review that is preceded by a scoping analysis. So we worked with the town planning staff, did some preliminary analysis, expanded the scope of the study in consultation with the town. And then we went out and did a very detailed inventory of what's, what's out there today for the transportation network. And then the third step after that existing conditions analysis is to look at the future conditions with and without the project. So really, what you're comparing is the future conditions with and without the project. So the delta is an indication of the impacts of the project. And then we would use that delta to identify whether that increased impact would trigger any improvements or if everything works fine. So that's generally the framework of the study. And again, all along the way, we'll be coordinating with the peer review consultant for the town, as we have done to date. It's a little bit difficult to read the map, but obviously, the site is located right here, off of High Street, where there's an existing curb cut. It's the West Mill complex, commonly referred to as the West Mill. East Mill is on the other side of High Street, the townhouse located right there, high school, four ninety-five. And a key feature for the transportation study is the commuter rail station, the Lawrence Station, that you see on the left edge of the slide there. Next one. So we started the transportation study with a preliminary analysis, as we typically do, because we want to solicit input from the town and also for engineers to understand how big of an area do we need to study, which intersections and which roadways would be impacted by a given project. So we did a preliminary evaluation that was actually part of the record that was submitted early in May. And then we followed that up with a meeting with the planning staff, where we talked about impact areas, what else is happening in town. And with input from the town staff, we were able to expand the study area. And what you see on that map, actually, each of those dots represent a key study area location. And we would, we looked at turning movement traffic, a whole bunch of statistics that I listed in one of the next slides, but not only the traffic flow on, at each of the intersections, but on the approach roadways to each of those intersections. We look at various metrics to understand how the system is functioning. The next couple of slides, actually, this slide summarizes the data that we use. Again, a lot of the analysis is founded in data, traffic counts, you know, daily traffic counts, peak period traffic counts, the morning commuter traffic, afternoon or evening commuter traffic, people coming back home during those timeframes. We look at truck traffic, we look at vehicular speeds, sightlines, roadway geometry and traffic control, whether it's sign, you know, unsignalized stop sign control, or if there are signals, how the signals are operating today, what the parameters are for the traffic signal, how the roadway network connects and provides access to the regional highway system. If someone, you know, a resident at the site, they were to go to work and need to travel south, you know, exactly what would be the routes that they would take, or what options do they have to travel within the roadway network? So we look at that. We look at crash data. The Department of Transportation and R M V has put together a very detailed crash database that looks at safety parameters for several years going back, and we look at the last five years of crash history to make sure that we understand traffic patterns and crash patterns that contribute to crashes. So if there are patterns, then we can try to address them as part of our recommendations. So typically, the D O T methodology requires two days of daily traffic counts and one morning peak hour count and one evening peak hour count, so essentially about, you know, again, two days of total count duration. We looked at six days of data, going from, I believe, a Tuesday through a Sunday. Typically, usually Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays represent your typical weekday conditions, and then Saturdays obviously represent a weekend condition for traffic analysis purposes. So the next chart that you see there actually provides a graphical representation of some of the data. I'll try to simplify the explanation of this. What this shows is, this is actually traffic on High Street, and we have data on other streets as well.
Specific spot or multiple spots where, where would you?
So in addition to looking at data at each of those dots that I had pointed out earlier, this count is actually on High Street between Prescott and Water Street, so that the section of High Street. It's a long, the count would be representative of the traffic flow on that section of road. So what you have here is, the x-axis is the hour of the day, and the y-axis is number of cars, and, you know, essentially hundreds of cars per hour. And what you see here in the blue line, that represents the weekday traffic, the average condition. Let's say you take the Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and you average it out. They're generally plus or minus about the same value. But what you see is this morning spike, that's, you know, around seven, eight A M. in the morning. That's your commuting traffic leaving this area, or people that work in the East Mill and West Mill complexes that are coming to High Street in the morning. So that's this morning spike in traffic. Similarly, you would see an evening spike in traffic that corresponds to around five to six P M. When people are leaving that area, if you're working in that, in that, either at East Mill or West Mill, or if you're a resident in that part of town, that you're actually coming back home. So that's the second spike. So generally, as you can see, those are the peak times of the day when you would experience the most amount of traffic. And this pattern, doesn't matter which road you look at in town, I mean, this would, this pattern would look the same on Water Street, it would look the same on Mass App. Most commuting routes would have a similar pattern. And then there are slight dips or bumps in the middle of the day that corresponds to lunchtime variations. But generally, from a traffic analysis point of view, the weekday morning and the weekday evening peak times are most critical for traffic analysis purposes.
So if I were to take that five hundred and eighteen that you have there?
Yeah.
Can I conclude that that's between five and six o'clock, the number between five and six P M.?
Yes.
Okay.
Plus or minus.
Right, yeah. And then you did a weighted average of the days that you observed, right?
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yep.
This is four twenty-five or five eighteen. That's the count of traffic in that section of High Street moving in both directions?
It's both northbound and southbound. And we have, for ease of, or simplicity of this graphic, I added the two, but there is breakdown of northbound and southbound.
So how do I interpret this with respect to the site?
Oh, I have some slides that come up after this.
Finish the question, if I could.
Okay.
With respect to the site, so this is the section of High Street. With respect to the site, so this is the section of High Street. That is between Prescott and Water. And where the site is, if I'm trying to understand, let's just take the morning rush hour. How many cars are on High Street sort of relative to that site? This will or will not pick up any current traffic coming out of the site and going left towards Sutton? Would that be part of this count?
This, this particular count location would not.
So it's only giving us, you know, I don't know how many people from the site are commuting north on High. And south on High, but let's just for the sake of making my point, let's say it's, it's split evenly. Then this would only give us half of the current traffic that is coming from the site. Now, there's other traffic on High Street that has nothing to do with the site, right? And I don't know what proportion of this current traffic is just from the site. But would, i- is my thinking okay here? Am I missing something? I mean, it's only capturing a portion of the traffic from, the current portion of the traffic from the site.
Right. So what, so there are other metrics. Again, this is one of, as I mentioned, this is a representative chart that shows how the traffic flows every hour on that section of High Street. If you drew the same data line on the north side of Prescott Street, let's say.
Right.
It would look very similar to this. You know, there'll be a slight variation because there are some.
We don't know what the volume would be, but the shape of the curve would be very similar, right?
Right. And the volume would be comparable to this. I mean, it would be slightly different, but it wouldn't be, this wouldn't be nine hundred cars. Four hundred and twenty-five could be four fifty, it could be four sixty.
Okay.
But it wouldn't be, but what, what you will not see if you took account north of the, let's say north of the side driveway, north of Prescott.
Right.
Is the traffic heading south, right? I mean, so the traffic coming out of the site. So I didn't, and that's one of the points I, I want to make in one of the future slides. And when you look at a development of this type or any development, the concern is, oh, you have all these residences. Or all of this office square footage, or all of these parking spaces, and they're all heading in the same direction. That's, that's not the case.
Right.
When you have the split, the left and right turns coming out of the site. If you look south of the side driveway, you're only seeing or observing the traffic that's making the right turn. If you're looking north of the site, you're looking at the traffic that's making a left turn coming out of the site. So that's why I was saying that these numbers would not be substantially off. They would be plus or minus in that range from, from the point of view of traffic analysis.
So I, I don't want to belabor this too long, but.
We, we can revisit this because you, some of it will become very clear when you see, when you see one of the other slides that has the site traffic on. This is the existing traffic count.
Right, okay.
This is what's happening today. If you were to go out on a High Street in that section of road, that's what you would observe.
Right.
Without the Avalon project.
Is there any way for you to capture traffic on a place like High Street that would, where, where there's, I mean, it's obviously, it's all about a site of interest, right? Is there any way for you to capture the count on both sides? Because no matter what segment of High Street you pick, like right now, it's Prescott to Water. I assume you're still only measuring at one point between there.
Measure at the beginning, at the end, you would get everything, right? Like if you have Prescott and Water, you measure Water and measure Prescott, you would get it all.
Two places, measure two places.
That's my point, yeah.
Right. And so really, yeah, exactly. As opposed to one spot in the middle.
Each one of the dots.
It just, it concerns me a little bit. And I, I mean, I'm not doubting your methodology and your experience. But I think when people look at this, it's very easy, I think, to look at it and say, oh, we understand the traffic on High Street. But with respect to the site, we're really only understanding half of it.
Well, one thing I do want to make, so maybe we could go back to the slide that shows the dots. But let's say we're, we're focusing on the two peaks. Again, the purpose of this graphic is to indicate that by far, when you look at traffic of this type. You would want to focus on the morning peak, which is the seven to eight, and in the evening peak, five to six. Outside of that, yes, there is traffic, but it's much lower. So when you focus on the hourly impact of traffic flow, you'd be focusing on those two peaks. So if you go back to the graphic with the dots on it. So that's, that's where the side driveway is located.
Yeah.
So we have counts within the study that gives you the exact breakdown of left and right. So you know exactly during those peak hours, in fact, it's actually two hours in the morning and we count two hours in the afternoon. You know exactly how many cars are making a left turn here, going up High Street towards Sutton. How many cars are making a left turn and then making a right turn onto Prescott? How many cars are making a right turn onto High and going down to Waters? You, you get very granular data within the traffic study for the peak hours. And that's really the focus of the analysis is the peak. And that we do not skip, or we, we don't look at one section and not at the other. We look at every segment of road where, where there is an impact. And that's why I was saying, when you look at the count at Prescott at High Street. You know exactly how many cars are going straight through, how many cars are making a right turn, left turn. So there are a lot of metrics built into the study. And the purpose of that chart I showed you earlier is to show that we would want to focus on those peak times, the morning peak and the evening.
I take your point. It tells us where the peak times, very helpful. Just one last question on this point. For this graph, and keep this slide here now, for the section of the street that this was measuring between Prescott and Water. What point on High Street did you take this data?
So again, these are actually add intersections. So the dots are actually adding to, so this circle here represents the driveway for the site. So it includes.
I'm talking about the graph that you're showing.
So that's.
Where would those numbers taken from?
So that's.
Right there, okay.
Somewhere right in that, south of, south of the side.
All right, thank you.
Speed, if you want to go past the, the other slide. So one of the other metrics that we look at from, again, in the context of safety and sightlines and, and, you know, perception of speed. Is speed data. So we actually again have some of these counting equipment actually captures speed data. And what you see here, can I zoom out a little bit, make it smaller? Yep, that's good, thank you. So each of these bars represents a range of speed. So this is one through fourteen miles per hour, fifteen through nineteen, twenty to twenty-four miles per hour. Twenty-five to twenty-nine, thirty to thirty-four, and so on and so forth. And over the entire course of our count, the, the entire six days. So we've captured the speed of every vehicle that traveled on High Street, for example, over that section of road. For the entire six days. And this represents the thousands of cars over the course of six days. And the, the range of speeds that those vehicles traveled at. And what you see here in the top corner, it's referred to as the eighty-fifth percentile speed. Which is the design speed for analysis purposes. So you would look at eighty-fifth percentile speed is, is, is the speed that you would want to do your analysis at. And, and want to understand the impacts of a project. So the northbound speed on High Street, in that section of High Street is twenty-seven miles per hour. And the southbound speed heading towards Water Street on that section of High Street is thirty-two miles per hour. Again, if you were to take that at a different section of road, you, you would get a different, a different metric depending on roadway curvature and, and churning traffic. But, but that's, that's a spot data.
Do you draw any conclusions here on why there's such a large variation between the north and southbound? In five of the six columns? Only one of them is close, the twenty-five to twenty-nine. Everyone else is a wide variance between north and southbound. What is that? What is that telling us?
So again, hypothetically, I haven't looked at the exact causes. But a lot, there are a lot of friction factors along the roadway. Like for example, if you're coming out of the Water Street, Elm Street, High Street intersection.
Yeah.
You're heading north towards Sutton, Sutton Street, you're essentially heading northbound. You have parked cars that are lining up the, the eastern edge of High Street.
Is, uh, south down the hill and north up the hill?
North is towards the airport.
Northbound is towards Sutton. Towards Prescott.
Northbound is downhill.
Yeah.
I would have thought it would be the other way.
Well, so yeah.
That, that.
If you go uphill, go north.
Well, yeah, but also the, the part that doesn't make any sense to me is the, at the intersection. It's, it's a three-way stop, not a four-way stop. But going down the hill.
Correct, it's a stop.
So you would intuitively think both going downhill and not having a stop sign would lead to faster traffic, but this is the exact opposite.
You know, the other thing that's kind of strange to me is.
There is no stop sign on High Street going through the intersection. You go up the hill and then.
Oh, going uphill is the, yeah, okay.
Again, this is a metric that we use when we use, for example, sightlines. You know, sightlines are very sensitive to vehicular speed. So when we test sightlines, that's really the purpose of this, is to understand if there is a speeding concern.
Yeah. So I, I think that, I was going to say exactly backwards. It's the stop sign. If you made it a four-way stop sign, it would be, Peter, if you put, made it a four-way stop sign, you would be closer to speed, you would slow the speed down.
So the posted, the posted.
Slow it down to let them park as well.
Okay, so why don't we, why don't, can we move to the analysis findings?
Yep. So if we can go to the next slide. And this is another data set. I just wanted to kind of show you the type of information we use, the, the, the various crash locations. And, and the type of data that we look at to understand crash patterns.
Yeah.
Then when we look at the project's traffic characteristics, we take a whole series of factors into account. We look at how close it is to the regional highway system. We are about a mile away from the site to get onto and off of four ninety-five. We are about a mile and a half from the commuter rail station. Not, not a lot of communities or developments have, you know, proximity to a commuter rail station that provides convenient access. There's bus service on Main Street that, that, that provides, MVR TA provides bus service on Main Street within walking distance of the site. There's actually Boston Bus starts at the site and heads to Boston in the morning and then comes back in the evening. So there are a whole series of.
Are you drawing some form of correlation that because commuter rail is one and a half miles away? That people are taking public transportation to get to the commuter rail?
So we have not taken, again, you'll, you'll see some of the metric.
Another data point that would be interesting to me is of everyone taking that commuter rail from that station. What proportion are driving themselves and using the parking garage versus the proportion taking public transportation? Because if they're driving, the proximity of that commuter rail has really no impact on this, right? Because you're still driving.
So the purpose of this metric is to indicate what's available within proximity to the site. The analysis is based on taking no credit. We have not taken any credits for public transportation. We have not taken any credits for bicycle and walking. And as, as Dave mentioned earlier, it's a conservative analysis in the sense that if the density on the site goes down. This is based on two hundred and fifty unit development and the numbers likely will go down. But again, this is just to indicate what's available at the site. And again, given the retail multiple opportunities that you have within walking distance of the site, that not a lot of developments have. You know, you can expect a certain level of walking and biking, you know, either during off-peak hours, nights and weekends. But again, we have not taken any credit for, for these alternate modes of transportation within our analysis. So again, a, a quick overview of, of what we found with, with, with our analysis. Again, a lot of the data is built into the traffic study that we can get into specifics. But it's all based on accepted Mass DOT methodologies that's been confirmed by the town's peer review consultant. The second bullet is something that may be related to somewhat what you were asking about. When you look at the census data, and again, that's one more piece of information we look at. When you look at census information for north and over, you can actually get census transportation data. That tells you how many people take public transportation, how many people carpool. It's, 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 it's provided for every community in the country. And when you look at it, approximately twelve percent plus or minus of, of residential traffic in north and over. Does not use a single occupancy vehicle for commuting purposes, based on census data. Theoretically, either it's transportation, work from home, carpools, two people carpools, three people carpool. There, there are multiple metrics that are available within the census database. But when you look at the data in aggregate, you know, you could say that right off the bat, twelve percent of the traffic would not contribute to some of the, the impacts in the areas that, that we are looking at. But again, while we quantified that metric, we did not take credit for that number. We analyzed as if everyone's driving a car to and from this.
I mean, that, that number's now probably nine years old, right? Do you think that number's increasing or decreasing just based on your experience?
Changes from community to community. I expect it to be slightly different when the next census comes out. But again, that's one more, I mean, if you are within a walking distance of a commuter rail station, that metric would be very relevant for analysis. So we don't have that in this case, so we, we do not account for it.
Yeah, no, I know, and you didn't take, it's not part, I know you didn't take, it says you didn't take credit for it as part. I'm just curious if that number, if your experience is that that number is changing. I mean, it's interesting, I think, I mean, some people like, might take an Uber to the commuter rail, right? But that's still a trip in, at least a trip in and a trip out, it's the same. But it's, you know, you, that was my.
So again, when you take the overall traffic estimate for a development of this type. And again, acknowledging that not every car's going to drive in the same direction, on the same section of road. You know, they, they're going to distribute as they come out left and right, and then you get up to Sutton Street, you make left and right, or you head south. You make left and right at Water and Elm, or you go straight, straight through towards Green Street. When you look at any segment of road and you quantify the amount of cars, the estimated number of cars from this development that would travel in various sections of the roadways that we are looking at. You're looking at anywhere from, hard of about five to thirty cars on different segments of roadway.
Can we drill down on that? You start with two hundred and fifty units of housing, right? And you assume a, what's the next step, a certain number of car trips per household per day? Or I'm just trying to.
So there are national statistics that looks at, you know, hundreds of residential developments across the country. And they're based on either urban or suburban locations. So because urban has a different characteristic than suburban. So we use suburban data for mid-rise multifamily residential, which this qualifies as, you know, up to ten storeys high is, is what that dataset contains. And it projects the number of cars per unit. And then you would multiply the number of units with the number of cars per unit, that'll give you number of cars per hour.
Well, okay. Well, that's what I wanted to get at. You get the number of units, the number of cars per unit, that gives you the total number of cars. And then what I'm trying to do is then translate that into car trips and then car trips spread out over the course of the day.
So you'll see one of the next slides, if you, if you were to go to the next slide. That's, that's what is referred to as the distribution. Again, this is a census-based analysis where using data for north and over and, and understanding the travel patterns and, and ease of commuting within the roadway network. We identify the percentage of site traffic that is destined in different directions. And this is.
I guess what I'm getting at, this is intuitively, what I'm thinking is you, you measured, you know, at a point on High Street. What the existing flow is and maybe it needs to be tweaked slightly. But, you know, the peaks were four hundred and five hundred. What I'm trying to understand is at, from the exit point of the site. During peak hours, how many cars are going to exit? And in other words, what you've done is you've spread it out. But I'm trying to understand that of two hundred and fifty units, so many cars per unit. How many people during rush hour in the morning are going to leave the premises in total?
So if you look at, again, this is based on the national statistics projection. It's eighty-four cars in one hour associated with the development in the morning. Majority of which will be leaving. There'll be a few cars that are coming in for whatever reason, but majority of them are leaving the site. And then in the evening, it's about hundred and seven cars that, most of which would come back. Some of them may be exiting, you know, people that are already within their unit, maybe leaving for whatever reason. But, but the perception.
Where are those numbers on your presentation?
Those are in the traffic study.
But not on the presentation?
I, you might have that in, in one of the other charts. So what I did was I took the, the hourly numbers and I added them. So what you see there is that previous chart that had that hourly traffic pattern.
Yep.
This shows the hourly, again, if you're looking at that section of High Street. This is, the blue line is the ambient traffic flow on Heights, on High Street, independent of this project. And the little orange bars that you see on top of it is the contribution of the project on that section of High Street. And then you.
Yeah, please, please let us finish because we're going through it very methodically and we can. Yeah, please, please let us finish because we're going through it very methodically and we can come back and ask questions.
Right. So if you, if you were to go to the next slide, we have a similar chart again, based on the distribution analysis. If you saw the same thing on Water Street, for example, I haven't presented Water Street. And this is again, the blue bars, Water Street has less traffic on High, than High Street on a typical average day. I made, made sure that the scales are the same so you can get a relative idea of the difference in magnitude. But again, the orange bars represent the contribution of site traffic from the Avalon Development on Water Street, west of High Street.
Is it fair to say that the impact of the site on overall traffic is gonna be greatest right at the point where you exit one to High Street?
That is correct, yes.
And then it disperses as you get, because, as a percentage of the total traffic, because traffic is coming back a lot of, okay. So am I fair to say though, right at that point of exit, if there's eighty leaving in the morning and the peak is today, four hundred, let's say, just for math, that's eighty over four hundred, that's twenty percent.
Right, at the side drive.
At that point, but then as you move away from it, it disperses.
It disperses. At Sutton, it disperses. At Water, it disperses.
Okay.
So if you're living on any section of High Street or on Water Street or Elm Street, you'll never see the, the full magnitude of the traffic coming out of the site because they're all not driving the same direction.
But the closer you are to the site.
Right.
Yeah, the higher that relative percentage would be. And the maximum is right at that point. And it looks like it's ballpark at peak about twenty percent increase.
At that particular location that you mentioned, yes.
Okay.
But again, when you, so that's when we look at, so that, what we just talked about is, is just the traffic volumes. Then there's a whole series of analysis that you do to understand what those numbers mean. You know, whether you have a stop sign control or a signal control. What's the delay today? How, how long does a car have to stop at an intersection? And how many more seconds of delay would the added cars add to that network at different locations? And that's built into the analysis and that's something that the peer review consultant is reviewing at this point. So that's where you understand the impact of the project.
Can you repeat for me, did you say eighty cars additional?
In an hour, eighty-four cars.
Additional, is that in the morning or evening?
In the morning, peak hour.
In the morning. Eighty cars exiting?
Uh, total entering plus exiting is eighty-four, but I would say ninety, eighty-five to ninety percent of those are exiting cars in the morning.
How do you derive the number eighty-four for that one hour in the morning?
So that's based on the national statistics that where the state and, and federal guidelines, they, they look at hundreds, hundreds of residential developments of similar type, depending on the size of the development, number of units and, and whether it's urban or suburban. And there are rates, trip rates that it develop, that says, you know, of a particular land use type of, and this applies to office, retail, any other project.
So based on the national statistics, a development of two hundred and fifty units would yield so many cars, depending on whether it's urban or suburban, and that's what you mean by national statistics?
That is correct. The Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is a national guidance that's used by all traffic engineers in the country to estimate traffic flow from developments. That's the guidance that, that we use and that's recommended by the state for analysis of projects.
As I get it, it's how many units, then how many cars are gonna be in those units? And based on the type of use, what type of trip percentages we would be seeing, those multiplied and that get to your trip.
You look at entering versus exiting.
What, and, and how does the analysis factor in? Let's, let's say you have a road that has a capacity of X and you're gonna dump twenty percent additional cars onto that road. But you're dumping that on at the point in time where the road is only bearing half of X. So the impact of that twenty percent at that point in time is minimal because the road is nowhere near its capacity. As opposed to dumping the same twenty percent onto a road that is at that point in time at X. So it's full capacity and you're dumping twenty percent on. So the comments you made a few moments ago about impacts of wait time and lights and stop signs, that's gonna vary dramatically depending on the additional percentage of cars that you put onto a road contrasted with what is the current state of the road at that point in time? Is it at capacity, near capacity, low capacity? And how does that factor into your analysis? How do we know, for example, that the twenty percent addition in one hour in the morning, is that going onto a road that's already at capacity? Or is it going onto a road in that one hour that at that point in time, we know based on national statistics that that road's only at fifty percent of its capacity, so it has plenty of room to absorb that additional twenty percent? It seems to me that that's key to us understanding this.
It is, it is. And again, the state guidance requires us to look at this as a worst case. We look at the very peak of that roadway traffic curve and we assume that the peak of the site traffic happens at the same time, just to your point.
Yes, but just because that's the peak of the traffic, how does that, how do we interpret knowing whether or not that section of High Street is at its design capacity at that moment in time or not?
So the analysis is based on, again, you might have heard this concept of level of service, like A through F ratings that you might have heard on, on other projects. So A indicates a roadway, I mean, again, this, in simplistic terms, at, at an intersection, a level of service A almost implies free-flowing traffic, that there is no delay, cars are waiting.
I understand it, never seen it, but I understand.
F is failing condition.
Right.
So we would run that analysis without the project for the side driveway intersection on High Street, for example, to see what that rating is today without any site traffic added on top of it. So that'll give us a metric on what that intersection's operating at. And each intersection, each leg of an intersection will have a different metric. And, you know, the traffic study has very detailed metrics that shows all those A through F ratings at different intersections.
And so at that hour in the morning, when we're gonna put, peak hour, when we're gonna put twenty percent more onto it, is it A or F or somewhere in between?
Again, it depends, depending on the location, but if you were to look at the site.
At the exit from the site.
High Street at the side driveway, if you were coming out of the side drive today, you would wait in the morning on an average about thirteen seconds before you turn onto High Street.
So A, B, C, D, E, F?
That's B.
That's B?
Coming out of the site, turning onto High Street.
At peak hour?
At peak hour. Coming out of the site. And that's, that's a function of the traffic volume. When you look at the combination of the traffic flow on High Street and the volume of traffic coming out of the site. And then you would, you would add the traffic, the, well, you would look at three levels of analysis. You would look at what's, what the operations are today, what the operations are in the future. Seven years into the future is what the state requires us to look at. So we look seven years into the future without the project, without site-generated traffic. And then we look at it seven years into the future with site traffic.
So am I correct in, in interpreting what you've said that at the location of the site exit, you're saying High Street is not near capacity?
It's not near capacity at the side driveway intersection. If you go up to Sutton Street, Sutton at High Street, it's very congested. You'll see level of service Es and Fs because, again, inability to turn left. Are you looking for gaps as you're coming out of High Street and turning?
So as we're evaluating the impact of that extra twenty percent, we need to be careful not to just look at the exit point from the site. We need to look at places where the road is already stressed and at or near capacity, like the intersection of Sutton Street.
And, yes, that is true. That's part of the criteria. The other part of the criteria that we use is how much additional traffic would the project add to that? You could have a very congested intersection a mile and a half from the site. But if the site does not add a lot of traffic to that intersection, then, you know, there's, there's no point in analyzing that. So we look at it from that point.
In this example, given you've got the camera at the site exit and you know exactly how many are going left, going right, going up Chadwick, of the twenty percent that's gonna go onto High Street at the site exit, how, what percent, what proportion of the twenty percent is gonna head up to Sutton?
So, well, when you look at the eighty cars, let's look at it that way as opposed to when you look at percentage of percentage, it gets confusing. So if you look at eighty cars as, as your around-figure number, based on the analysis we have, we have about thirty percent of those eighty cars that would go up to the, to the Sutton.
And what does that do to the rating of E or F at the Sutton intersection?
It does not change.
Because the, the, the proportion it's adding is small?
The delta, the, those little bars that you see there. Depending on where in the network you're looking at, you're looking at those little incremental bars and the impact is not incrementally significant enough. As a whole, yes, I mean, you're looking at two hundred and fifty units. But at no point within the steady area would you find traffic associated with all two hundred and fifty cars except at the entry and exit point. As soon as the cars come out, they disperse, left, right, you know, some go down Prescott, some go up to Sutton, some go down to Green.
Yep.
Okay? You can scroll down. So, the animation is gone. So what we have done, again, based on, you know, what I've summarized in, in about fifteen minutes is, is a very detailed analysis. But one of the locations we particularly focused, given the high crash rate, you know, the, the Sutton, High and Chadwick Street intersection is one of the locations that has a high crash rate. And, you know, that, that's borne out in the data and, and a lot of the commentary that, that we've heard before. So we looked at what could be causing both the congestion as well as some of the safety concerns. And this graphic, this, this animation in here, but it looks like it has all of the, the bullets popping up at the same time. Two of the, it's, it's, it's a closely spaced, as, as you know, it's a closely spaced triangular intersection that's made up of Sutton Street, High Street, and then Chadwick Street that cuts through to intersect with Sutton at an angle. The section of Chadwick Street that's between Sutton and High has no control. So there is no definition on who stops or where you stop or, you know, there, there is very limited information. If you're heading north on High Street, there's a stop line. If you're coming west on Chadwick, there's a stop sign. If you're going south on High Street, just as you turn off of Sutton, there's a yield sign. I mean, the, the combination of signs is, is not typical. And, and the markings, as, as you can imagine. And then there's an abundance of pedestrian crosswalk signs at every crossing at that intersection. So, and then one thing that I haven't labeled in here is the length of the crosswalk. You can see the angled crosswalk across Sutton. That puts a pedestrian crossing Sutton Street, presumably one of the busier roads in this area, for the longest possible time, the pedestrians on the street for a very long time. You could modify some of those markings, you could modify some of the signage, you could change some of the traffic control. The left turns, for example, coming up High Street and as you all know, if you want to turn onto Sutton, you would see that some cars make a left turn before the island, some cars make a left turn after the island. So there's, there's, there's clearly no definition of what drivers need to do. And one of the things we have identified, again, we haven't resolved it yet, would be working with the town and the DPW staff to figure out if there are ways to improve that condition, with signage, payment marking, directional information, so that the confusion is reduced and the potential for crashes is reduced.
Basically, what you try to do is you try to set up ninety-degree angles, right? I mean, that's a large part of the problem here is you don't have any ninety-degree angles.
I mean, there, there are several things that you look at. You could, I mean, without looking at it closely, you know, you could consider making this section of Chadwick, for example, one-way eastbound. And maybe it was like that at some point in the past and it was made two-way. But if you were to make Chadwick one-way eastbound, if you're coming up High Street, you can't make a left turn. There'd be, do not enter signs on that first left turn. So cars would have to come up to the Sutton Street intersection and make a left turn. And then you would mark a stop bar and a stop sign. So cars know exactly where to stop, so they're not pulling out into the travelway and, and in harm's way as, as they get onto higher-speed traffic. So there are various things that you could look at.
Did your study do anything similar to, I, I find this very helpful, thank you. Because anyone who's gone through there, I think, has experienced what you've drawn. Have, has your study, it's not in the summary, I don't think, but does the study also look at the intersection between High and Prescott?
Yes, actually, if you, it is part of the study, but yeah, you'll, you'll see.
There it is.
The other location that we've identified as an area of concern.
Yes, Pete.
As part of the study is the intersection of Prescott and High Street. And again, you have, you know, you have an island in the middle of the road and you have multiple turning movements that can be made on either side of, of that island. And we, just before coming to this hearing, we had a meeting in the field with DPW and engineering staff to talk about this intersection and, and ways to improve or mitigate the condition. We haven't come to any conclusions yet, but one of the options we were talking about is, you know, maybe there's a possibility of, of adjusting the location of the driveway. Currently, it's, it's located right there, offset from Prescott Street and aligned with the East Mill driveway. Is it possible to adjust the alignment of the driveway better with Prescott Street? Or maybe you move it in the other direction to separate it more from Prescott Street? So there are pros and cons to moving it in different directions. There are sightline considerations that we need to look at coming down the curve on High Street and the speed of the cars. So there, there is a process we would go through to figure out an optimal solution for this that, that works for the town. To some degree, the, the geometry here is, again, an existing deficiency that requires a solution independent of this project. It's just that, you know, we are highlighting the concerns associated with, with that location. But going forward, working with staff and the peer review consultant, we would identify potential improvements that could be considered for, for that location. If you go to the last slide.
Can I go back to an earlier comment while we're on the Prescott intersection with the site driveway? So I'd been asking you what High Street is rated there, and I think you said it was about a B?
Coming out of the site and to make a left or right turn onto High Street, it's rated B.
And what was the wait time?
It's about thirteen seconds on an average. If you're coming out, it could be fifteen, it could be eleven.
Right, average of thirteen.
On an average, it's about thirteen seconds.
That's existing.
Coming out of the site.
Right, and what happens when there's an additional eighty cars at thirteen seconds each?
I believe that delay gets added by two more seconds, I believe, coming out of the site and making the left and right turns. You, there are gaps. I mean, if you're out there during that peak time, the eight to, you know, let's say seven thirty to eight thirty, it doesn't even need to be eight to nine or seven to eight. It can be fifteen-minute intervals, it could be seven fifteen to eight fifteen. If you're there during that exact peak and a lot of the project team members were actually there during the afternoon peak just earlier between four thirty and six P M.
Yeah.
There are gaps in traffic. Yes, there are congestion issues up at Sutton, but right at the side entrance.
Kind of accordions, right?
Right, there.
So I, I, I think my thinking is not straight here, but just help me understand why it's not right. If, if at the, the peak time leaving the site, we have thirteen-second wait time on average per car, if I'm adding eighty cars, why wouldn't each of the eighty cars have an additional thirteen seconds each? And what does that do for backing up the cars?
Right, so it's not just a function of how many cars are being added to the stop-controlled approach, it's how many gaps in traffic you have on High Street. When you say that the traffic is flowing on High Street, essentially there are adequate number of gaps. Now, if the Sutton Street traffic backs up all the way down to the East Mill driveway and there is no gap, it's just a line of cars just going on. Let's say there was a detour somewhere in town and everyone's being routed on High Street. Then the delay, the level of service would be an F. You wouldn't be able to make a left turn coming out of the site. Even if you only had five cars coming out, there is no gap. So it's a combination of number of cars that wanna leave and the number of gaps that you have in the street. And the analysis demonstrate right now at that intersection that there are adequate gaps to handle both what's going in and out of that site today and what, what we would add as part of this project. We actually went back historically, several years back to two thousand and seven, looking at historical data. There's actually additional office space on, in the West Mill Development back then that's since been demolished. And when you look at the traffic counts, we're not talking about adding two hundred and fifty units of residential traffic today on a, like a greenfield site. There was quite a bit of traffic. When you look at the two thousand and seven data, there were hundreds of cars going in and out of this very driveway. And the numbers have gone down over the years just because some of that has been demolished.
Are you saying that because of the, there's less effective commercial density on the property? Ten years ago, the traffic was heavier?
Not heavier than what we are projecting now, but it wasn't zero. That's what I'm saying. Back then, you know, you might. Back then, you know, you might have hundred and fifty cars, now you might have two hundred cars. But it's not zero to two hundred, it's one fifty to two hundred. That's the difference it's trying to draw.
So you use onsite measurements, you use national and state standards and metrics to come up with your analysis. Do you or any regulator ever go back and say, hey, here's what you predicted for the future at this site, and a year later, here's what we actually found, and here's how close you were or not?
We, quite often on projects, we do what is referred to as post-construction monitoring studies.
Yeah.
And we always go back and do, as part of that study, parking.
Yeah.
Traffic counts.
Right.
This level of service analysis at key intersections.
Typically, typically.
Plus or minus ten percent for residential projects.
Yeah.
There are certain, yeah, residential projects, you're pretty much right on.
And when you do the post-construction, you know, looks, is it typically at six months and twelve months and two years? What intervals do you do that at?
Usually it takes, again, after full occupancy, it probably takes for, it depends. And if it's a retail use, it takes, you know, three, two, three months to a year for numbers to stabilize. For residential project, after full occupancy, I would say after a couple of months, traffic patterns would be established and you'd be able to go back and do it. And I would say that those numbers would not change substantially month to month once the numbers have stabilized. If it's a retail use, holiday traffic and other things might affect. But residential traffic's very predictable. And that's where the national statistics indicate very high degree of correlation between what we use in the analysis and what's actually observed in the field.
I appreciate your patience with all my questions.
No problem, that's why I'm here.
I just have one and then we'll go to people that want to. If this was a commercial project, what would, in general, what would traffic, how would that change from this analysis? What's kind of, what's the kind of a difference between commercial and residential?
So I would say the big, again, obviously, it's a function of the size, right? I mean, units, residential units versus, you know, eighty-five thousand square feet of commercial office use or retail use. But I would say the biggest difference between like an office use on the site versus a residential use is the direction of travel. So residents are leaving the site in the morning when all of the office uses on, at East Mill and West Mill are coming in. So it's complementary in nature, so it's not only a function of how many cars, it's which direction the traffic is flowing. So I would say a residential use with traffic that complements the office use is more ideal, I guess, in terms of traffic flow and analysis than to have office traffic overlapping office traffic. But again, in terms of, again, office uses. Right, it's usually about, you know, four cars per thousand square feet. So when you look at commercial uses, then you would come up with a different set of metrics.
Okay, great. Okay, so members of the public, if anyone wants to make a statement or a question or a comment.
Hello. My name is Stephen Whitney, I live at Thirty Elm Street, North Andover, which is three-tenths of a mile from the site, from the entrance to High Street. And I'm also a mile and a half from the other site, across from Barker's Farm. It's going to have a hundred and ninety-two units, multifamily apartments. And I'm going to go out on a limb with the analysis that only eighty-four cars are going to come out of that site with two hundred and fifty multifamily units. I mean, I don't believe two hundred and fifty family units are only going to have two hundred and fifty cars. That said, I'd like to quote.
Well, I think he said eighty-four during the peak hour.
Right, 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 I get that. I'd like to quote a study that was done in March on Elm Street by Mark Wilson, and who works for the town of Andover, North Andover. And the reason we did this speed study was because our Verizon wires were torn down by an extra-large truck, which has never happened before. And I wasn't the only customer, there was four or five other customers on Elm Street heading down towards High Street that also lost their service. So the study was done in March, and basically, the data box was set up at thirty-three Elm Street, where the speed limit is thirty miles per hour. The incoming data was as follows. The total amount of vehicles in a seven-day period was ten thousand six hundred and seventy-six vehicles. The average speed of these vehicles was twenty-nine point eleven miles per hour, and of those vehicles, one point three percent were large vehicles, quote-unquote. The eighty-five percentile speed was thirty-three miles per hour. The outgoing data towards High Street is as follows. Total vehicles, ten thousand six hundred and fifty-four vehicles. The average speed of those vehicles was twenty-nine point six two miles per hour. And of those vehicles, point nine percent were large vehicles. The eighty-five percentile speed was thirty-four miles per hour. And they claimed they're going to, he claimed they're going to assign a selective enforcement in the area to deter any speeders. And I'd just like to add that at the top of Elm Street, at Main, they did change that intersection to deter higher speeds a few years ago. Unfortunately, it didn't work. And basically, when people make that turn now, coming off of Main, taking a right onto Elm, I would say seven out of ten cars cross the double-yellow line because they're going too fast to stay within their own lane. Just an anecdotal observation, living where I live. So I'm just, I'm all for progress. I'm not, I'm not here to bash anybody. I think progress is what makes North Andover a lucrative and productive community. That said, I would encourage the board to perhaps do a little research into the business practices of Avalon and reviews of some of the tenants and their communities after a year of tenancy. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good afternoon, Adam Zimmer, one thirteen High Street. I have two questions, can we go to slide seventeen, please? No, on that. My first is a question on the study was, there's been a couple more. It's the picture of, that one, right there. There's a significant amount of pedestrian traffic that comes down High Street in the morning. It's kids going to the middle school and the high school. The middle schoolers will continue up High Street where they cross over there. The high schoolers, if they use the crosswalk, will cross over the entrance to Sutton Pond. They cross over and then they go either up Prescott or they'll cut through there. Can you just talk briefly to how you captured that data? Or is that part of the, so the thirteen seconds to get out of there, did that take pedestrian traffic crossing there? Could you just talk a little bit? Is that, is that okay?
As part of the traffic study, when we did the traffic count at the East Mill and the West Mill driveway intersection, that count also included the crosswalk across High Street. So the data, though I haven't gotten into the numbers for pedestrian volumes, the data includes the effect of pedestrians crossing the street.
Crossing the street, but what about crossing the entranceway to Sutton Pond?
Yes, our analysis includes, the count at the intersection includes, in addition to vehicular traffic, passenger cars, we pick up pedestrians, bicycles, buses, and trucks.
There is, it's done in May, is that correct?
May.
So you were capturing school year pedestrians?
Yes, that's one of the prerequisites, is to do our traffic counts at time of the year when school is in session, there are no holidays, nor adverse weather conditions, as it requires.
And I have a second question, and that is, you said you went back and looked at data from two thousand and seven, yet I don't see any of the fatality data there. If we look at the bottom right-hand corner, on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven, Jessica Finley was killed at that intersection right there. If you go up the road, make a left on that corner there, at Sutton Pond, sorry, Sutton Street and Main Street, two thousand and seven as well, there was a fatality there. And then the third fatality in two thousand and seven was over on Mass Ave. Again, all of the traffic would pass through in that direction. And I think it would have been useful to look at that because that, to me, the other thing is when you look at the fatality data for North Andover, the vast majority of it happens on one fourteen, one twenty-five, four ninety-five high-speed road, not these smaller streets along here. And so it would be nice to know what was it about this intersection here on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and seven that contributed to that fatality, and I'd like to understand that. Is that a fair question?
Make a general statement about historic data. The crash information that's being referenced predates the mixed-use development that's taken place within the East Mill and West Mill. Two thousand and seven timeframe, I believe, is when the property converted hands and the new development started going in. Generally, when you do have a mix of traffic, as I mentioned, the complementary nature of residential, retail, and office traffic, that does help mitigate or spread the effect of traffic a little bit. But again, that's just hypothetical. I mean, I do not know the exact circumstances under which that fatal crash occurred in two thousand and seven.
That's why, that's why I said it would be interesting to get that data because it came off that curve there. If that curve's contributing to it, it doesn't matter if it's before mixed use or after mixed use. If that curve is dangerous, that curve is dangerous, right? You pump in another eighty-four cars, it's not going to exacerbate that issue at all, right? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey there, me again, Robin Morgeson, one forty-seven High Street. I just have a few points. Can you tell me, you mentioned it was, I think, over six days that the traffic study was done. What were the, what was the date? When was it done?
So the counts, I believe, were done between May seventh and May twelfth.
Okay.
It's long before the Memorial Day weekend.
Okay. So I'm curious as to why the traffic density wasn't, wasn't, the traffic density, or density is the wrong word, the amount of traffic going down High Street in both directions wasn't, the whole road wasn't taken into consideration? Why it was just that piece of the street between Water and Prescott? Because that's really not representing the total traffic on High Street. That's a percentage of the High Street. And if we're going to talk numbers and we're going to say, what is the actual impact of this on the residents or the neighborhood? It all, isn't all of it important? I'm not sure I understand why we segmented off just the people who are turning right and left out of the property and not all of the cars that are coming up and down High Street, and what that total is.
I think it is, because it's, I think you have like, it's like a toll gate. And so everything that passes through that toll gets counted. The point Peter was making is that depending on where you do it, you might miss a little bit of exit out from the site at any point in time. But I think it captures, I think you captured all the through traffic.
I, yeah, I do want to clarify again for the audience. When we look at the traffic counts at each of these study locations, we are not just counting one leg of the intersection, we're counting every movement that occurs, lefts, rights, throes, main road, side street. What you saw in the chart is just one segment of the analysis.
Another point you made, I think, is that every one of those places that was in red, you count the volumes at every one of those?
That is correct.
Okay, so that's in the bowels of the report, you just summarized some of it.
Summarized it for one location.
But that wasn't represented in the totals that you gave, right? That you, the totals that you gave were based on the rights and lefts out of the mill property, right?
Just to clarify, I think, for representative purposes, just to explain the scope of the study, there was one location picked. But if you look at any of those dots that are on the site, we could do a similar chart for those as well.
For the peak hours, yes.
For the peak hours, we could do similar charts for those as well.
So the point is, there's a three-hundred-page traffic study, it has all the bigger data. I think they were just trying to give a summary of an example. So yes, it doesn't, that one example doesn't cover the whole thing. They provided that data. It's just we didn't go into each one in super detail tonight.
Got it, okay. Because, you know, as a High Street resident, I'm guessing there are more cars that are coming up and down, that are coming from Elm, down to go to four ninety-five, and there are more cars coming up High Street towards Elm. And it would be interesting as a resident to be able to see those numbers because I think those are more, you know, to me, those are more factual numbers for what's really happening.
Can I clarify this question? I want to make sure I understand the answer. Do you mind going to slide six? So all of these orange dots are the places where you captured data, is that right?
Peak hour data.
Peak hour data, okay. Now, can I ask you to go back to slide eight? So this graph shows the volumes at different points of time just for that section of High Street. But in the three-hundred-page report, is there a graph like this for every location represented by those orange dots?
No, I generated this chart for the purpose of this presentation, but all of the data in fifteen-minute intervals, you have detailed data of how many cars.
In the three-hundred-page report, there's no graph like this for High Street, but there is a table of data for High Street.
For every intersection.
Tables of data for every spot. But that must be very difficult for people to read without the graphs.
Well, the purpose of the traffic study is, again, to come up with what I would call as these networks that you would have seen in traffic studies, the peak hour traffic networks that indicate how many cars are turning at each intersection in different directions. And the impact, and these represent the peak hour numbers. So there would be a graphic like this for the morning peak, and there would be a graphic like this for the evening peak, and then we would look at.
You're saying that that graphic is the conclusion of the study?
That it captures, it synthesizes the three-hundred pages of data.
And that's not in the presentation, that graphic?
This graphic is not. This is too fine of a detail to be able to see, but it is part of the traffic study. That is a snapshot of one of the legs.
A couple other points. You talked about the speed, measuring the speed in front of the four High Street. I think as a local resident, I can tell you that there's speed discrepancies, I think people sitting here will agree with me here, in that as you're coming down Elm Street and you're going down High, there's restaurants there, and there's people pulling over, and there's people double parking, and there's people trying to parallel park, and you have to slow down. But, once you get past the restaurants, boom, they speed up. So the speed right in front of four High Street is not representative of the total speed going up and down High Street. I think that's pretty accurate to state.
That's a fair point, it's an important point. And again, I'm glad Officer Lannan is here because some of this stuff is existing condition off the site. But we ought to address all of it, so I'm glad you brought that up.
Yeah, thank you. And one other thing related to that area is, you talked about there, right at that annoying intersection by High and Water where there are three stop signs, and then none. Going up High to Elm, I don't know what the actual reason is, but I always figured that it was because when you're going up to Elm, that's a steep incline. And in the winter, in wintry conditions, to try to stop there and wait for the person in front of you to go through the stop sign and then try to get traction to get up that hill, might be pretty tricky. So I'm just guessing that maybe that's one of the reasons that they didn't do a stop sign for that area. A couple other things. The, I think we already talked about the point of the train station being a mile and a half. I don't really, I really was struggling to figure out what the purpose of that was. Because if they're going to the train, they're likely going to drive down High Street, so that, again, just says more traffic. And my other question was about the impact on, I don't know how many people have driven down, I don't know if it's called Main Street by the middle school? Is it Main and one twenty-five? So if you've ever driven down to the middle school at drop-off and pickup times, it's pretty crazy there now. And so I'm trying to imagine eighty, a hundred, however many more cars in that area going through that intersection at that time is pretty significant because it's all ready. I drive there trying to get. I drive there trying to get to work. I'm not dropping off or picking up, and it's backed up.
I think the point that you made is that once it leaves the driveway, it disperses. So it's not going to be anywhere close to 80. Goes by the middle school, it might be 10.
Right.
You know, because it goes in five or six different paths.
It does. But I would guess that the majority of them will either be going down High Street because they're going to go to 495, or they're going to be going up by the middle school to get to 125. Everything else is really minor. It's like to go into town, you know, so I think.
Peak hours, most people, I mean, again, with a residential complex, go and work, right? That's what we're presuming.
Yes.
So you can go right and go onto High Street, and from there, you can turn on Water. You can go up Elm, you can make a left on Water. Most probably won't make a left on Water, but either go straight up Elm or make a right on Water.
Exactly.
Or you'll take a left.
And they're going to go to 125.
Yeah, but right, and from there, you'll go either right or go left. So I think the point is that there's at least four different ways that those cars will go.
Yeah.
Who knows which way, but if you say that it's going to be even, that's 20, 20, 20, 20 over the course of an hour. So I mean, just that's the way, it would, more certainly.
Yeah.
But how much more is the question that we're looking at? And what the impact is on how, as Peter said, how busy the roads are now.
Sure.
I've got another question on that, but I think we've got to wait for everybody else.
Yeah, and this is my last point, is because I'm not, I'm not really understanding how you get to the 80 or the 100 and you feel like that's locked and loaded. But is the town, or did the town do an independent study or an assessment of this? Or will you be?
Yeah, so there's a review of their report is being done, right? Yeah, so we're doing a review of their report. So if our consultant, who the town hires and chooses, they pay for, could say, yeah, the data makes sense, that's the data I would have used, if that makes sense. Or they could say, no, I disagree with this point X, Y, and Z. So, being done.
First of all, I would like to thank the planning board for all their hard work they do to keep this town a desirable place to live. My name is Heather Norwood Cole, and I live at 73 Water Street. And I am the owner and operator of Top Notch Cuts at the same address. I am the former owner of Mel's Barbershop located at 128 Main Street, also the former co-president of the Merchants Association here in North Andover. I would like to start off by saying that my family has had three generations of businesses, including Main Street and Water Street, for the last 80 years. I myself have owned my own business for 35 years. I was born and raised here. I am a townie, and I care very deeply about the future of North Andover. I have seen many changes over the years, and I believe in reasonable growth, progress, and development. I believe in our community and businesses thriving. But when you can't find parking all too often, you keep driving and you bring your business elsewhere. I have legitimate concerns about the traffic and congestion, which currently exist in Machine Shop Village, especially for our pedestrians, police, fire, ambulance, not to mention the customers we hope will come to town and utilize and frequent our businesses. Countless times, I have witnessed on High, Elm, Water, and Main Streets, emergency vehicles having to slow down or come to a complete stop when responding to a call. Streets so congested at times, making travel response times slowed. Not what we want for critical calls, not what we want for the safety of our citizens. I personally have seen many car accidents, as well as near misses on the streets of Machine Shop Village. I am concerned that beginning an additional apartments to an already congested part of our town could only make the issue of safety worse. Because of the current overcrowding with parking on both sides of Water Street, the norm has become, has become drivers driving down the center of the street due to the fact that the road can't safely accommodate cars parked on both sides, as well as traffic moving in two directions. It's a recipe for disaster, and I feel daily that someone will be hurt or even worse. In winter months, Water Street becomes impacted and even more of a safety hazard. The street becomes more narrowed with piled snow. And once again, people who want to utilize and bring us business complain about the narrow roads and limited and/or no parking spots available. I've spoken to many business owners on the street and in the area, and we all have the same concerns. If Avalon is allowed to build more apartments in this historic part of North Andover, we, as a community, may not gain business. And we fear that we could actually lose business due to the congestion and lack of available parking. And with additional apartments, safe travel in our neighborhood becomes more of an issue. With regards to West Mill lofts, currently, residents of the mill have two parking lots allocated for their use. During the day, the parking lot at the corner of Water and Church Street is filled to capacity, which forces mill residents to park on Water Street. Water Street is two-hour parking, not all day. Our businesses suffer. The parking lot is underutilized by the mill residents overnight. The lot sits more than half-empty most nights, which means mill residents park their cars on Water Street, leaving Water Street residents limited parking on the street. Not ideal, not safe, and definitely not neighborly. Can we safely handle an additional 400-plus cars a day coming and going down these already congested streets? This is, this is not including if Sutton Pond closes off their footbridge. If they did, then the traffic would be considerably, then the traffic would considerably go up dramatically. I urge the planning board to focus on minimizing and regulating the negative impacts on our town, particularly those conditions affecting quality of traffic and public safety. Thank you for your time. I also have a copy of the traffic report that was done on Elm Street by the gentleman who spoke. And also, the police department did one on Water Street. And the, he had already mentioned Elm, so I won't repeat that. But the slowest, the maximum speed on Water Street at one time at nine o'clock at night was 60 miles an hour. The average speed is 29 miles an hour. Approximately 400 cars a day are over the speed limit. So how, so hard to do as I drive about 20, 25. There's 3,160 cars a day that go down Water Street and come back. So I will give you a copy of that because it's easier to read than their 350-page report.
Good evening, my name is Don Romano. I'm a resident of 18 Buckingham Road, which is, believe it or not, nowhere near where this apartment is going to be built. So the reason I'm here tonight is I'm one of the citizens of the town that has apartment fatigue. And we won't go there because that's not the purpose of this particular meeting. But the basic is, is like, this just seems like a really bad location for the apartment. Now, I think, I love statistics. I mean, you can make them do whatever you want. This has been a great slideshow. I can, you know, I can take statistics and bend them at will. But I think what you need to do is kind of feel the smell test. Now, this is a 250-unit, really high-end, beautiful sounding thing. It's the kind of place that I would love to move into when I was like 23, 24. Small family, dual income, something like that. There's no way there's 85 cars coming out there during rush hour in the morning. We're talking about one or two cars at least between school and between young professionals going to work. So 85 cars just doesn't smell right. Second thing is queuing theory. When you're, you know, you know what it is, like, when you get to an intersection, there's a car stopped in front of you, and then two cars and three cars. It's not linear, it's not like 10 seconds a car, and you're going through it. There's a gap, and it gets worse the longer the line gets. So that's not 15 seconds per car. That's going to be, that's what they call a stacked-up traffic. It gets longer the more cars you have stacked up, so. But my biggest point is, is that I think that this study is really interesting. It was colorful, whatever. And if I saw it in isolation, I'd say, great. But the thing that you're going to have to do as a planning board is you have to raise it up a level. This is a lot more complicated than just looking at numbers and cars going down the road. This is a, this is a complex situation. You need, as a planning board for our town, to look at what is our plan in the next three to five years as a community? And this is all in isolation at a point in time for a single project. You need to say, what are our most important projects? Is this apartment complex in a residential neighborhood more important than the senior center and the apartment complex going there? Is it more important than the apartment complex that is already being built close by here? Is it more important than further development in the mill complex for business? Is it more important than the middle school field project that they're already concerned about? Traffic studies doing that right off of Main Street and the middle school? So we've got a lot of growth going on in our town, and it's great. But the thing is, is that this is like, you know, it's like liquid physics theory or whatever. It's like the butterfly effect. In a point in time, you can say, hey, this looks great. But you need to really look at three to five years and say, when you combine all this together, you're going to have to crunch all those numbers and do a integrated traffic study of, well, if I build this here, then, and if I build this here, people are going to change their behaviors. So they're going to move around. And what's going to happen is you're going to have unintended consequences. So the thing that I really challenge you to think about is, is this the best place for an apartment complex in a busy part of the town? And are there higher priority things that might already affect traffic going on that would be sacrificed?
A couple points on that. One, I believe this study did look at that. It looked at seven years in the future, what it would be.
I would ask what they looked at. Did they know about the middle school project? Did they know about Amazon going in down the street on 133?
The future conditions analysis, we need to take into account known projects for which traffic studies have been filed. So, we wouldn't be able to create data for projects that are hypothetical or someone that hasn't filed an application yet. But working with the planning department staff, we have accounted for known projects for which traffic studies exist, including the previous application that you talked about, the senior center project and the residential component that goes with it. And also, what we included, which wasn't part of the discussion with the planning staff, is there are unbuilt units within East Mill, and we accounted for that as well. Because, and when you look at seven years into the future, we want to make sure, just like the town is, that there is a workable access and circulation plan for the development as well. So we look at known developments and, as well as vacancies or unbuilt development portions within developments in proximity to the site. So we have accounted for that.
So, and then the second, second thing is that, as a planning board, we can't tell people what to build on their lots and on their property. So if someone comes to us with a project and says, this is what we want to build, we have to examine it. So we can't say you need to build in this area, or this area, or this area unless zoning is changed, right? So we work with the zoning. If, you know, there are studies to look at whether zoning should be changed in different places, and we're looking at zoning downtown and things like that. The point I agree with in what you said is that we do need to look at how, we can't look at one single factor, right? So traffic is one factor, and that's just what we're talking about today. If you've been to other meetings or seen any of the roads, we've been talking about other things. We've talked about effect on school. We talk about how it would impact locally, you know, the heights and things like that on the neighborhood. So we're trying to look at all of that. Other things that I think we'll talk about is that we have to consider housing needs, not only in North Andover, but in the state of Massachusetts or in the area, how it works with our master plan, effects on, you know, tax revenue versus costs and things like that. So yeah, we have to consider all of that. But there's no fancy machine that we can just throw all these numbers into. We just have to look at all of that, talk it out, listen to people that come forward, listen to the applicant, listen to our planning staff, and other staff, and make the best decisions that we can. So that's what we're trying to do.
I would argue that there is mathematics to, since we already have preliminary traffic studies potentially for Amazon and also for the middle school project, that those two projects should be added into the existing traffic studies here.
I don't think we have for Amazon.
Yeah, well, I was like, talking to the middle school, the athletics fields, all that area there. That project that is, I guess it's on hold right now or whatever, but it got passed by town meeting.
Yeah, so we, the traffic study there was done for the kindergarten, so that was the one that.
Okay, and then Amazon, I didn't know if we've done a traffic study there? Because that's going to affect traffic going the other way. And I guess, you know, it's like the butterfly effect. It could affect, just any change affects everything else.
No, that's true. So and so good if they built a four-story office building, which they could do by right, right now, that would also have an effect on traffic. So something's probably going to get built there, and it will have an effect on traffic, and it will probably not be for the better. The question is how much and what we can do to mitigate that.
Okay, well, thank you.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Kokan. I'm a resident of 62 Milton Street, which is up in the library area. So I'm a neighbor, but not in a butter. But a frequenter of many of the businesses in the mill area. I also walk my dog down Main Street, High Street. I have a daughter who just got her driver's license, who will be driving down High Street, up Prescott to the high school every day and back. And I have a son who's on the cross-country team, who runs around these streets daily. So I have very strong concerns about the traffic and the impact on this area. Even though I'm not in a butter, I do use these roads, as many people in town do. And what struck me is when I was here two weeks ago and Avalon showed some of the other properties that they've built, as they were kind of giving that satellite image view of other properties, it really struck me how different a lot of them look from ours in terms of location, size, et cetera. And one of the things that struck me is that a couple of the properties they showed were, for example, the one in Saugus is on Route 1. One of their other properties, and I found some of these looking at their 10K results that have number of apartments and different property sizes, et cetera. But they have property in Cohasset that has, I should put my glasses on, 220 apartments on Route 3A. They've got an apartment complex in Bedford that's got 139 apartments right on Route 62. So a lot of their properties are right on major streets. And if they're not on major streets, they have really easy access to Route 93, Route 95. For example, the property they used to own in Andover is right on River Road that has direct access to 93. The complex they own in Sharon that has 156 apartments is on Coney Street, direct access to 95. So I just question the location of the size of this project. And it's not direct access to 495. It's not direct access to 93. And the streets that we need to use, that people coming out of this complex will use, don't have traffic lights. That was the other thing that struck me, is that all of the apartments they have that don't have direct access to a highway, they get onto a street that has a traffic light that then gets them onto a direct highway. So as we're looking at Sutton, that, the High Street and Sutton Street, there's no traffic light there. When we're looking at High Street and Main Street, there's no traffic light there. And so I'm really concerned about pedestrians, I'm concerned about traffic. And that's where I think, you know, yes, we know something's going to go in there, but the size and the complexity of the added traffic component to that. It gets to my second point, and I wanted to address kind of if Avalon is going to be revising their plans. The other thing I noticed in a lot of those properties is that a lot of them have multiple entry and exit points. So for example, that property I mentioned in Andover has two entry points. It only has 115 apartments. Their property in Bedford has two entry points. It only has 139 apartments. They also have properties that have divided entry and exit points to allow for better sightlines. So I would encourage them to take a look at what their options are in terms of those entry and exit points to help minimize the tricky traffic coming out.
Right, so we talked about that at a previous meeting. Difficulty is with additional curb cuts on High Street that has its own dangers. If they had, and I think I asked if they had any ability to cut through an exit to Sutton Street because I think that would be an ideal way of minimize, dispersing the traffic. At this point, it doesn't seem like that's realistic. But if so, I think that would make a big difference in the project. So we have been looking at that. I'm not sure that that's a great answer.
Right, and I guess my, my answer to that is, are they trying to shoehorn something into a space where it just doesn't fit? Is it a square peg going into a round hole right here in downtown?
Hi, my name is Jill Angelo Santo, and I live at 41 Pearlie Road. Could you bring up, I have just, I think, two quick points. Can you bring up the Sutton and High slide that you had here? Because I wanted to point out one thing, which is not specific to this project, but is specific to this intersection. I walk, I have a dog, I walk around this neighborhood a lot. If you're coming down Chadwick, I guess it would be west, to that intersection, you cannot see if a car is coming down High Street. I have to step into the intersection to see if there's a car coming. So there's a stop sign there. If there's a car at the stop sign, I can see it, but that's all you can see. So if cars are coming down, if they're going too far, overshooting the stop sign, I can't tell. tell. And I am basically currently taking my life into my own hands to just cross the street to go home. And being that this is a kind, already a known problem, adding, you know, especially in the rush hour, a number of cars to this intersection is going to be even more of a problem, I think. And I think pedestrian traffic is going to be an issue with, you know, somebody maybe getting hit by a car. Also, one of the things I worry about, which I know wasn't taken into account in the study, is, so Pearlie Road is just down a little bit on this map, if you were to come, I guess, south. And it goes Pearlie Road to Thorndike and it makes a little loop around and you come out back to Sutton. Are people gonna start, if that intersection gets bad, are people gonna start cutting down our neighborhood with these tiny little streets that won't be able to handle traffic? I moved my driveway 60 feet on Irving Street, which has, it has no access to Sutton. And the DPW said it was two, 30 feet from the intersection was too close and it was a known traffic issue. And I had to convince them that the five cars that currently drive down my street, my driveway moving so I could put a fence in from my yard was not going to be a traffic issue. It took me four weeks to convince them of this and they finally signed off on my permit. But if that was a concern, my moving a driveway, maybe 50 feet on an area where the five cars drive down, how is this not a major traffic concern to have 250 units coming in just around the corner from that? My last point would be, has anyone looked at, in the traffic study, did you look at the on-ramp to 495 or the, the 495 intersection here? Because that is the worst highway on-ramp I have ever seen in my life. I recently moved to this neighborhood. You have to loop all the way, if you get on at 495, they're currently doing the construction. You have to loop all the way around, come back to go to, to 495 South. And same like, you know, going north, you have to loop back around to come off the highway to get onto Sutton Street. It's a major traffic issue currently with the way that the pattern is. And I've seen also a lot of near misses with cars not knowing which lane they're in and going to the wrong way. So, and my thought is, if you're having a lot of people going to 495, if you're not looking at that, you're gonna have traffic backed up on Sutton Street if, if people can't get onto 495 because of the way the traffic pattern is there currently. And you said you have to loop all the way around to get to 495 South to go to 93. So was that taken into account in the traffic study?
I didn't seem to do a 495.
Just in qualitative terms relative to access to 495, it's not just this one access, the exit, exit 44 that you hit on Sutton Street. There's actually exit 43 down by Mass Ave that actually just provides southerly access. So most likely, if you're heading north on 495, the chances are you would come up High Street, turn left onto Sutton and go 495 north. But if the intended direction of travel is south on 495, maybe someone can choose to go up Sutton, turn around at the next exit and come back, but most likely they're gonna head south on High Street. And so those cars would never show up at this intersection, they'd go straight down to Mass Ave.
My name's Dave Goldman, 56 Thorndike. I only want to make one point here is that my two children, one of them goes to the NAMs, one of them goes to the high school, just starting soon. And while traffic studies may have been done on the recent traffic patterns in this area, I'm not convinced it's representative of the buses and the kids on foot and on the parents bringing their kids to NAMs and, and the high school. I think that's a significant amount of round trip traffic specifically in this area. This is right in the middle between the NAMs and, and the high school. There's a lot of traffic that I don't think is being represented. And when my kids are gonna be walking through this, I'm worried. That's the only point I wanted to make. Please take it and advise me.
John Thompson, Sutton Pond. Two quick points. High Street to Sutton Street is not free-flowing traffic. Many houses have, do not have off-street parking. If it isn't a landscaping truck, it's a homeowner parked on the sidewalk. And if you're driving on your inner lane, you stop so the person can come the other way. That's today. That's reality. You can't go through that section because they're parked on both sides of the street in the street. You know? So your floor pat, excuse me, Fred, the floor patterns are bull. Because you have to wait. Now, if you've got somebody behind you, there's two of you waiting. And same going the other way. The other, we're talking about this intersection. The town in its wisdom has approved 50 or 60 units on the opposite side of the street that is gonna use this intersection, coming the other way at us. What's the story with that? How about the store, the rental in the parking garage, which comes into that intersection? Merrimack College students using that with a shuttle? What about those cars? I mean, you add all this together and these statistics don't mean a thing. Your, things come, another 60 coming at you from across the street, plus the people coming in and out for the garage. And then they want to sell the garage, that's the next move.
Great.
Hi, I'm Diane Montella from Sutton Pond. And I promise you, planning board, I didn't come with my own remarks today, but someone who took the time to prepare some remarks but defines herself as not a public speaker, as many people feel they don't like to do public speaking, has honored me by asking me to read her remarks and given me permission to select some highlights from it. And then I'll present you with her written remarks. So this is from Carol Morris, who's here today. And she has defined multiple categories of encroachments that come packaged with the plan for Avalon North Andover. So her message is this. Encroachment of our traffic to our tiny residential neighborhood is her concern. At the last meeting, it was said that there are 600 parking spots, I think in the region. And now with the proposal by Avalon, we'd be adding 400, and I think the number was 34 last time, more. That brings the number of parking spots, if you add to that 600, to over 1,000 cars in traffic in our tiny residential neighborhood. That does not include the counting of fire trucks, tractor trailers, buses, vans and other resident cars out, a little bit outside of our region, of that, of that nucleus where the Avalon building is proposed. Overwhelming our tiny residential neighborhood and our safety will be these added, this added traffic. Should High Street and Prescott Street, just two streets, just two streets, be subjected to all of that extra traffic from, you know, multiple hundreds of vehicles? There's only one exit for these extra vehicles. Encroachment of home values follows that concern. No one wants to buy a home with an eyesore in the middle of our neighborhood and the congestion and added traffic. We should not, we, the taxpayers here before you, should not lose our homes' values due to this proposal, which is not endorsed by the people who have managed to be able to be here and stay here and by the hundreds of people, 1,300-plus people that signed that petition sparked by the Finnamores. Encroachment of our natural reserve, Lake Kachikowick, which apparently this Morris dearly loves. How much water usage will these apartments stress our water system? So added pulling of water from the system. Will it result in extreme conditions in things like moratoriums on washing of cars, watering lawns, being told not to shower during certain times of drought? And we must think about that and protect our natural reserve. Encroachment of our school system, she notes that people, you know, spoke at the last meeting about the overwhelming the school system with added taxes that would be passed on to taxpayers in North Andover to do the changes that would be needed to accommodate the 44 children that were identified by Avalon as predicted to live in the building. At the last meeting, a selectman said that the need to replace the trailer classrooms and the need to make additions to existing schools that are already overwhelmed still exists. And that's without this, the added strain of these apartments. So she's identifying that the selectmen have identified that as a problem already. Encroachment to town services, particularly fire service. So fire trucks having to deal with the extra traffic that's been noted before of coming down Prescott Street, et cetera, entrance in Egress with extra vehicles to deal with. Does the fire department have equipment in place already to deal with five-story buildings? Will there be an added burden on the taxpayer if the fire department has to purchase that equipment? We have not talked about what stressed these approved apartments and this proposal will have on our electric supply, electric suppliers, including heating and air conditioning.
All, we, our town departments have looked at, they look at fire, they look at police, they look at all of that.
Okay. Great, thank you. And lastly, she notes encroachment on our wetlands and displacement of underground water should the proposal as it stands go through. Many of us were at the Conservation Commission's meeting and they were taking that concern very, very seriously. On northandoverma.gov, there's a page called Water, Wetlands and Your Water Supply. You might not want to drink the wetlands, but they are important to our water supply. And there's a whole tutorial there about how the wetlands are critical to cleaning our water, maintaining the, you know, the water tables in our reservoirs, et cetera. And so Carol asks, where will the displaced water go? And I would like to, and she closes by saying that she would like to thank this planning board for their service to the town of North Andover and for their commitment that you've been demonstrating to the taxpayers to look at all of these encroachments. She would like to ask the planning board members, if you were homeowners in our tiny residential neighborhood, how would you feel about these multiple encroachments possibly resulting from approval of a plan like this? Where you currently live, would you like an eyesore and all the problems that we've addressed tonight landing in your neighborhood? And respectfully, Carol A. Morris.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, so I see two more people. Let's do two more. I do, would like to wrap this up.
Hi, Jeff Coken. I'm with, I'm at 62 Milton Street. I'm actually not going to express my opinion because I think my wife expressed it rather eloquently for both of us. So I have actually a simple question, I think, for people associated with the project, specifically around the MB, the Merrimack Valley Regional, the MBRTA bus, the express one that runs down to downtown Boston. Has there been discussions with that bus in regards to, A, the, I think the loss of parking, that the project would actually take up? And then also the accommodation for that ones, but like, not the regional, not the local stuff, but the kind of commuter bus into Boston? Has, but there been any discussions? And can you just kind of summarize what their kind of reaction to the project is?
We met, we met with MBRTA and they're very excited about having more potential riders right at the front door. We would work with RCG to make sure that the bus could continue to be accommodated and there would be parking for, you know, people that were driving to the site to get on the bus as well.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, Judy Luciano, Marble Ridge Road. So no NIMBYism, not my neighborhood. But just in listening, you know, if you were gonna put this development like on Assembly Row in Somerville, I'd be psyched. Like, I'd probably want to live there. I could go out in the morning, get my Starbucks, hop on the train, go to work. But you're plopping this massive development right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. And it looks like, if I read it correctly, 250 units may have to be scaled down, 400 parking spaces. I don't know if that includes guest parking or if it's just for residents, but that equates to 1.6 parking spaces per unit. And when you're talking two and three-bedroom units, North Andover is not a walkable community. We drive everywhere. We have to. You know, I don't see people riding their bike to Market Basket to get laundry detergent and a gallon of milk and biking back. We take our cars. So I don't think that that number is accurate. I would think that it's low and that 84 cars leaving in the morning, in turn, I think, would also be low. So I just think that that's something to consider and, you know, maybe needs further looking into.
Hi, John Finnamore, 90 High Street, next to the petitioners. I'll keep this short because I think I'm the last one. I agree tonight that tonight is not the night to air all of our grievances, right? We have a laundry list of things that, some of which have been repeated tonight, right? So we'll stay on, on traffic. Actually, I'll make one macro point. If you think about the first session that we had tonight with Takis, right? Whether you're for that or against that, the petitioners listened and they came back with adjustments, right? We are, we, the Conservation Committee of Atlanta, it was very emphatic, if you were very emphatic, no. In fact, said, why are you even here, right? We would implore you to not bring this plan forward without the adjustments the town was looking for. Traffic is just one of the laundry list of concerns that the, that the community has. Gail just brought up one note, if you've ever been stuck at that, Sutton Street is a clear problem, right? So that Sutton Street intersection and the Prescott Street intersection, I'm really glad that those were identified. If you guys can help solve that problem, great. And do it without a rotary, please, but solve that problem. That's worth a beer. I won't support the current project, but I'll buy you a beer at Jamie's. But, why are you...
I hate rotaries, but I actually kind of think that, I actually kind of think that would actually be good. But I hate them, but...
That's your default, to go into a rotary, right? Find something else first.
I hate them, but I think it would, I think it would work.
It's better than what we have now. Anyway, please come back with something else. We implore you, this plan won't work. You've heard it said many, many different times. You're shaking, you're nodding your head, I think, so that means you're, you're listening, you'll come back with something. That's great. That probably means we're gonna have to start some of this over, but the plan as it's defined won't work. And I think you all know that.
That was my initial, that was my initial point at the beginning, is that...
And so that's what we're gonna talk about now.
Yep.
So, so I think, right. So, and I would say that with, just to compare it to the Takis, so I agree with you, John. I agree that there should be a time to listen to what everyone said and put it all back into the plan and say, okay, what can, as the applicant, what can we do that works for us and that may work for other people? And that's what we're hoping to see. With a smaller project like that, it's a lot easier when you have five neighbors or 10 neighbors to do that than when you have a bigger project that has a bigger impact. So the Concom decision has sort of given everyone kind of a pause time, so I think should really take advantage of that. So I would like at this point to hear from members of the board what you would potentially look for in general terms in a revised plan. Things that concerned you, things that you appreciated in this plan, you know, to the extent that anybody wants to give them advice and feedback, so.
I have real concern with the distance to the immediate butters on High Street. They showed us the distance from the building corner to the houses, the measured distance, but to the lot line significantly closer. And I think those people have the right to enjoy their entire yard. So I, I'd like to see it shifted on the lot, at the very least.
Yeah, I mean, I echo those comments. I think it's, what we're struggling with more than anything else is the size and scale of that building in relationship to the surrounding property. And it's most pronounced exactly what you've said, but it extends all through it. And that's, right, I mean, at the very first meeting when we talked about the pretty pictures, but we didn't see building profiles and how you could view that in from the property. And that's what I think, I think site visit will help address that. The other thing is, you're talking a little bit about the subdivision road. And we have yet to, you know, sort of have what I'm gonna call an engineering discussion of the subdivision road and why it was laid out the way it is and how it's laid out and so forth. And I also think, you know, we're talking about Conservation Commission, but I, I've walked at a property a number of times just by myself. I don't understand, you have yet to tell us what your building constraints are and why you laid it out the way you did based on the slope and topography and so forth. And I think that would be, would be a helpful thing. But above all, it's, it's, it's just the sheer number of units and the size and the mass of, of the buildings, I think that's what we're all struggling with.
Do you have any thoughts? I mean, and I, I'd be having a good mind about, you know, where I'm envisioning, you know, this going. But, I mean, you can come back to us with any numbers you want, but for me... But, I mean, you can come back to us with any numbers you want, but for me, 250 is too much. I mean, it just, it just is. If we're talking 100, 150, I think we're talking about a different project, three stories as opposed to five. I think we're taking, now, not set on any of those things, but just that's where it's in my head. So, but first, I just, you know, I'm just gonna, I just wanna talk about some of the positives I see, okay? Because I think we've heard a lot of, heard a lot of negatives. I think that we do need more apartments and units, and I think we need them downtown. If you look at our housing production study, if you look at Massachusetts, any housing production study in Massachusetts, there is an extreme shortage of housing in the area, in the state, and even in our town. And it's very difficult to make any dent in that if you don't do multifamily. And it's very difficult to make any dent in that if you don't do it, there are very few pieces of land that are available that would support it. Additionally, if you wanna support downtown businesses from a planning perspective, then having bodies in that area is the best way to do it. And that's why I, I know in one of our earlier meetings, we had a packet from the owners in, in the West Mill of why, of, of at least some of the businesses there, why they would appreciate it. So I do think it's important. That being said, I'd love to see some of it be affordable. You don't have to, it's not part of any requirement. But for me, that contributes a lot to the public good to have affordable units. We're at eight and a half percent, I think, is that right? In the next census, I believe that's probably gonna go down because at this point, we don't have any inclusionary zoning. Hopefully by next year, we will. But to me, that makes a public benefit, and if it's not gonna be here, it's gonna be somewhere else, and those students and those units are gonna come at some point. So the more we can address that now, I think the better projects are. And that doesn't go, just to go for, you just happen to be the person in front of me that I can, can say that to. Next apartments that come and want it, I wanna say it to them, too. There should be ones that have affordable. I'd love to see improvement to the subdivision road, really work with DPW and make sure that they approve of it. I'd like to see further mitigation of the number of cars, so anything you can do with a shuttle bus, you know? So I love the idea that it's close to the, a mile and a half from the subway station. But if you have everyone driving there, it makes no difference. So if you have a bus that goes every 20 minutes, you know, with eight people, and those people don't have to have a car or only have to have one car so that they can drive out on the weekends to get groceries, because yes, I think everyone, you know, is gonna have a car, but you may need one instead of two. If you can take a little bus that takes eight people and goes to the train station, or if it goes to RCG, or if it goes to, you know, one of the other properties, or if it comes from Forgetta and loops around, you know, work with them. I think there's a way to reduce all of the traffic. Same with the MVRTA, so I'm glad someone asked you about that. So those are the things, I think, I personally think it's appropriate to have housing there. I think it's good to have housing there, but it's gotta be scaled way down. You can convince us of the numbers, or me of the numbers, but I think it's gotta be scaled down. So that's where I'm coming from. Peter?
Yeah, for me, it's size and, and massing, you know, the, the overall size, which I think all three have said, and where the size is concentrated right up against that neighborhood. And I also, you know, take your points about, you know, in terms of, of right, what can be done, right? So the notion of housing there, I, I agree with the chairman that there's some benefit to that. But when the scale of the housing, you know, scale gets to the point that it, if it's overwhelming, then it, then it, it overwhelms the good. So, and I think we're all struggling with that. So, you know, you're, you're, this is, you're, you're an expert at this. So help us understand how housing can fit in this location, in, with these roads, in this part of town, so that we can help you make it work. And my sense right now is, we can't because of the scale and the massing right up against the neighborhood. And then one micro point on traffic. I would really like to see the delta of cars moving out that access road, not with the denominator of existing traffic on High Street, but with the denominator of existing volume on that access road. And I'm not sure that you did a traffic study on the access road itself, because that's not one of your orange dots, I don't think.
You say access road?
Coming out of the site.
Site driveway.
The site driveway.
The site driveway, the leg coming out eastbound, coming out of the site is part of that intersection.
So you, so you have the current data of volumes of cars coming out of the site?
Peak hours, yes, we do.
That's the number I wanna see. If it's 84 cars, not for the whole morning, but for the peak hour of the morning-
Yep.
-over what existing number of cars, not on High Street, but on that access road?
Yep, I can provide you that.
And I think if we see that, then we're seeing oranges and oranges.
Yep.
And that would be very helpful.
Ready?
Yeah, I'd echo fellow board members, really around the size and scale. I think there's such an opportunity to complement and add to the neighborhood versus kind of dominating what's there, but really adding to the richness of the neighborhood. So I think that's just a great opportunity to do and help build that area. And also echoing the concept of affordable units, if possible.
And I have one more item, but this is not for them, it's for you. Is it possible for the board to get some type of tabular representation of number of multifamily housing units added in this town over the last period of time? Five years, 10 years, per year? Is that possible? Because one of the comments that I thought was very helpful was, let's not just look at this in a snapshot of time. So, I mean, we do know, I mean, I'm giving somebody work, if you agree, as a chairman, but I would like to see, I would like to see what is the pattern and number of multifamily housing units per year over the last five or 10 years, so that I can understand, how does this fit in?
It's a housing production plan.
Great.
So we can tabulate it, I think we'd have to be careful of how we use it-
Okay.
-for our consideration of the special permit criteria in evaluating a specific project. But I think we can use, you know, I don't know that, like, I don't know that we could say, we've had X, now we're cutting it off and saying, you know, you can't have X.
Well, I'm not, I'm not saying that, I'm trying to put it in context, yes.
So I think we can, I think it's fair to get the data, I think we just have to be smart about how we use it. So, Gene, we can get that from the housing plan, right?
Yeah, I can do it from the top of my head, I think.
Okay. Well, I think we should, I think-
Starting with the history.
Well, the two, the things, permitted-
Yep.
And then actually developed, right? Because there's some that have been permitted that haven't been developed yet.
We have constructed within five years, we have some that have been permitted and under construction, we have some that are permitted and not begun construction, and we have some before you today.
Yeah, so I think that would be a good chart with those broken out. Okay.
Could I just say one thing, please?
Well, can you?
Do I have to?
Yeah.
Hi, my name is Barbara Surr from Sutton Pond. I totally agree if they could move the buildings further away from the neighborhood, but please don't move them any closer to Sutton Pond.
You could just put them in the middle, underground, that would be perfect. Okay.
Type of building that you're building.
Okay. All right, so, next steps, I don't think it makes sense to do a site visit right now because we're re, you're reconstructing the plan, so I don't think it makes sense at this point. So let's come back on August 20th and see where we're at.
Sure. I think that our next step is, as we've said, we're gonna go back to the drawing board and look at the site plan. I think the major comments are the access and also the density, especially as it relates to the abutters. We've heard that loud and clear. We're looking at it already, based on what we heard at Conservation last year, last week, which was probably the, you know, is gonna make the biggest change to the plan because a lot of it was predicated on waivers that we're not gonna be able to get now, which is somewhat unfortunate because that's where, that's away from the abutters. So, but that said, we're working on it, and I'll come on August 20th. I may have a plan, I may just have an update, but I think we're gonna start with a new site plan and some new views before we rebuild all the engineering around that. And maybe we can just talk about setbacks and views and architecture and density. And then once we have some level of consensus with the board on that, then I'll release all the engineering again. That would be my request, if that's acceptable to the board.
Okay. Are you also, as part of your thinking, taking another look at perhaps opportunities for another exit to Sutton Street?
The issue with that is, you would have to fill wetlands. Because there's a wetland that goes right along the property line that leads over to Clean Harbors. And based on the feedback we got from the Conservation Commission last week, we don't think that's on the table.
Bridge? Well, there already is a bridge on this site.
Not on my site.
I know. Right.
Okay. All right, so why don't we continue till August 20th? Anything else, Gene?
I would just add, so as far as the definitive subdivision plan, it looks like we're really not close to that. We just talked about September 5th being the date to either withdraw or on the 20th extend. I'm curious for your thoughts, is it, what do you-
Are you sure that's the date? Have you denied the preliminary plan? I think you have longer-
I reviewed it with counsel today, and her interpretation is, although it was filed, it wasn't contingent on whether it was denied or approved. It was 90 days, not the 135.
Let me, let me take a look, can we talk about that afterwards?
Yeah, but-
Okay. Let's confer with RCG, but we can talk about that on the 20th.
Okay.
I think we're, we just need to talk to RCG about what our combined take on this.
Yep, that's just the one-time table that, it's really sensitive. And I know there was discussion about being 135 in the past, and I went to counsel today. Okay.
Okay, great. So we'll continue till August 20th. Thank you, thank you everyone who came out.
Thank you.
Can we get a motion? Do we have, we don't have anything else, right?
I don't.
Okay.
Second?
All in favor?
Assume there are no minutes, because it's not on the agenda.
Good job, let's let it-
Oh, yeah, there was-
Gene, did you chance that we get that multifamily housing?